Since this is May and Memorial Day is in this month, we may as well do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Paul, you're very good.
To your republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God.
Justice, liberty, and justice for all.
Sounds like one of those AT&T commercials where they have everybody from around the world say something at the same time.
Sure, and I think it's more like that Geico ad. Okay, we're gonna get started with public speak. Anyone that would like to participate in public speak, please unmute yourselves. Amanda, you might as well go through them because we don't have that many additional people.
Okay, Joe, would you like to go first?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go ahead and go first. First, I wanna thank y'all for all the hard work you guys have been doing on the budget and the transparency with that. With being a new town resident, it's good to see that type of transparency, especially during these times. But I wanted to touch on something different, and I'm not the pitchfork and torch kinda guy, so I kinda gathered my thoughts down, wrote them down, so I'm just gonna read them out. But, so my name is Joseph Godwin, I'm a resident here in Andover. Me and my family moved to Andover because, well, while home shopping, we fell in love with the area. But we liked that, we saw Lake Road neighbors out walking, jogging, bike riding, taking their dogs on walks, just about everyone waves to each other, it's a pretty friendly area. So, we liked it, we fell in love with it, we did our research, school ratings were great, reasonable tax rate, low crime, and the lake amenities nearby, we loved that. Alright, this meant a lot to us and we decided to move in, we moved in last November, and we plan on staying. Fast forward now, we're on Lake Road, we love our neighborhood, but recently we've made some concerning, or some concerning observations of some of the current traffic habits, which I'll get into, I figure that's a sensitive topic with some folks. But we've made some concerning observations, and some of the, some of the observations, you know, have to do with speed. And I'm not talking about the occasional speeder, I know that happens. It's the constant flow of speeders on Lake Road specifically. So, this consists of residents, non-residents, contractors, triaxles, trucks, cars, motorcycles, the postal service, UPS, FedEx. It seems like everybody has a little bit of skin in the game. And because of that, I can't let my kids play in the front yard. My property is a little bit sloped, and the scenario of the ball rolling into the road is all too real. And I know if that were to happen, there'd be a likelihood that one of my kids would most likely be struck. So, just crossing the street to get to the mail turns into a game of Frogger unfortunately sometimes. I've almost been taken out by side mirrors if car's going thirty-plus miles an hour. I've taken kids on walks, which turns into a nightmare when two cars pass by in the opposite directions, and usually well above the posted speed limit. And lastly, for the same reasons as noted previously, taking my child out on her bike becomes a dangerous task. She's still on her training wheels and her margin for error is, is very low if she were to tip over while we're riding her bikes. So, no activity feels safe around Lake Road, unfortunately. And, you know, I've seen it, people yelling at cars. I'm not the one to yell at somebody or wave my hands, but I've seen other people become pretty upset. So, with that being said, you know, there are those that argue that the road's not the place for people, and I would disagree. Neighborhood roads have historically and culturally been a place where children play, bikes, skateboard, rollerblade, etc. That's how I grew up, I grew up in Groton when I was younger, and we, we were kinda out and about, we'd ride our scooters, ride our bikes, and we'd clear out when a car came. Unfortunately, here, I think it's a, it's a little bit more difficult because there's, there's a lot more speeding going on than what I remember as a kid. And with the lake so close by, this can't be our attitude. You know, I think we all benefit from safe neighborhood roads, and, you know, and I'm sure that others feel the same way in other parts of the town. In light of these observations, I decided to reach out to a very small portion of the community, representing about twenty percent of Andover's population on Facebook, social media platform. And, you know, I, I asked them if they noticed this traffic trend, and I know a couple of selectmen that are on tonight have been there, read some of the comments that were, you know, have been made. Some people, you know, they, they get angry, they don't have a solution, and, you know, they just kinda spill it out there. But I wanted to come to you guys officially and, you know, address those concerns. People gave out dozens of examples of how people blow through stop signs, they speeded obviously, path pedestrians dangerously close, and not just on Lake Road, but other parts of Andover. There were some, which, this is hearsay unless it's already on the record, I, I don't know, I am new to town, that they say they've approached the trooper and the selectmen in the past looking for solutions, and from their perceptions, the status quo has continued, nothing's been done. Others mentioned how this Board of Selectmen is new and would be interested in hearing about the problem. We, as a community, have identified it's a public safety problem in its simplest form and an opportunity to make Andover neighborhoods a little more safe for everyone, especially as we approach summer and more people are out enjoying the weather. And while it might be easy to say the trooper will take care of it, it'll brush off the issue because there is not a clear solution, I'm contending that there might be a solution in developing a public safety committee with some of the Board of Selectmen to address the issue. Stop signs, speed bumps, radar speed limit signs, more trooper presence, ticketing are all components of the solution, but organized collaborative approach is necessary. The trooper can't single-handedly provide a solution. In fact, once you pass the trooper on six or three sixteen, it's a safe bet you can speed without consequence for the remainder of your travel within town. So, this isn't something that I think is gonna be solved instantly. I don't think there's any magic formula to control individual behavior. I think there will always be those who think about themselves and, and continue to go about their ways. But I know that there's mitigation and then steering controls that can be implemented over time and encourage drivers to obey the posted speed limit and create a safer neighborhood, frequenting by pedestrians. So, this is my official plea for the record, to form a public safety committee with a minimum of two selectmen to address the speeding problem or any subsequent action deemed more appropriate to address the problem. And I understand that these things cost money, and I know that it's not gonna be done immediately, and I, I think that is good to be expected, but I think that would be money well spent in the future, whether that's next year or the year after. So, thank you for your time and consideration, and I'll forward my thoughts to you guys to have on record.
Alright, thank you. Amanda?
Jeff, real quick before-
Adrian, Adrian, it's public speak, let's finish that. If you wanna put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda. Amanda, let's go.
Joe, are you gonna stay on?
Yeah, I can stay on.
Yeah, as long as he stays on, and I, I just, I wanna ask him a couple quick questions about, people had ideas, but I didn't really understand what they were saying, so.
Amanda, let's go.
Okay, so next up, we have Wally.
No comments tonight, thank you.
Howard.
Rochelle? Rochelle, would you like to participate in public speak?
I'm muted, I think.
We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me? No, then I have nothing to say, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Melissa Latteska?
Is she muted from us?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Diane previously said that she is all set with public speak. Joe, is that your other phone there? Catherine?
No, I'm all set, just listening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Griffin? Barbara, would you like to participate?
She must be away, let's go to the next one.
Next up, we have Joanne Hebert.
Set, thanks.
Thank you, okay, Julie Victoria?
Hi, I'm just here to answer questions about the library if anything comes up.
Okay, thank you. Kim?
Just listening at this point, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Linda?
Just listening.
Thank you. Steve? Steve, would you like to participate in public speak? Okay, Amy? Amy, would you like to participate in public speak? Elaine Picard?
Hi, just listening, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, and the last one is eight-six-zero-three-three-five-zero-two-six-four?
Head chief mic.
Okay, thank you, I think that's it.
Alright, we're gonna go to agenda item three, additions and deletions to the agenda. Adrian, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I wanted to add the motion for, I'd like to add some, some conversation or motion for a minor town ordinance addressing public boards and commission appointments.
Okay. Why don't we consider putting that on our new business, does anybody else have anything else? Jeff?
I would like to, can we modify the, the agenda? It says cool on it, and cool isn't really the, the thing we wanted to discuss, it was the Andover Summer Camp. We have that changed, modified.
It was changed.
Okay, I have an old version then.
Okay.
It was changed? I don't have it changed.
I'm looking at the one on the website.
The under packet from the website, it's the updated version.
So, the one you sent to us is not updated?
Right, the one I sent on Thursday was the original.
Okay, that explains it. And Adrian, would we like to discuss the, the traffic issue in town?
Yeah, I'd like to, that was my next thing, is can we put the, put the idea of maybe a safety committee on?
Sure.
So, can we make the minor ordinance seven H? And then the safety committee seven I? On the agenda?
Anything else, Paul?
No, I'm good.
Scott?
I'm all set.
Seven H and seven I, so seven H. Which one did you have first, Eric, the safety agenda or the other one?
I would've said the ordinance first, but it doesn't really matter.
While we're working this out, Dennis, did you get a chance to look at the revision that Eric may have sent over to you?
Yes, I did, and I, I edited the revision.
I didn't see that from Eric.
I, I did CC you on it, but you may not have got it, I don't know.
Alright, let me check my other email, if we can go to town.
Okay, so, since we're all set with that, do we have someone that wants to second the motions for the additions? Or I'll make a motion to add seven H as minor ordinance related to elected official appointments, and seven I, discussion regarding the safety committee.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, we're gonna put that on the agenda. We're gonna go to item four, boards and commissions, presentations and appointments. Four A is Board of Selectmen Community Senior Center Building Committee. Jeff or Scott, either one of you wanna discuss that, or are we all set for right now?
We haven't got started with that yet.
Yeah, one thing, I, I did reach out to all the members, I've only heard back from two, and only one was sworn in.
Alright.
So, I don't know what headway we're gonna get, I'm still kind of waiting to see if anybody's gonna get back to me.
Okay. Four B, Website Development Committee, Paula?
We have a meeting this week, and Amanda, feel free to chime in. From my, from what I understand, the site is being migrated over, so we are cooking, we're cooking it.
Do you have a live date yet?
Amanda, did they give us a date?
We do not have a date, and I, Adrian, I did push back a little bit to see when that would be. Unfortunately, it won't be before this upcoming committee meeting, but they are working on it. And I put a couple of the mockups in the packet for everyone to check out. I think it looks wonderful, and they're gonna get back to us about training the staff.
Well, more importantly, before we're live, I haven't seen a beta version for us to check out yet.
I had sent out the mockup for the homepage and the-
I know we got mockups, that wasn't the question. We want a beta version that we can go and play with before you go live.
That's not available yet.
Yeah, that's not, that's not in the work, yeah. It's coming.
That's what they're working on.
Before we go live-
Adrian, we will do that before we go live, so-
Thank you.
Pages, the slides that you put in, Amanda, look great, but Adrian is correct, we should sit there and see it and be able to get to it. So, but it does look, it looks very nice, Amanda, nice job.
Yeah, it does, and I can't wait to show you guys, and I think that it would make sense for the committee to work on it and then present it to the board and make sure everyone's on the same page before we launch.
Has, has the committee had a chance to, to play with it at all?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's not ready yet.
It's on the migration process.
Listen, I, I agree with Jeff, the mockups look great, just wanna see how they interplay with the dropdowns, that's all.
Once, once we have that, we will get that to you.
Okay.
And, and also keep in mind, it's not gonna be perfect, you know, it's, even if we see the beta and we go live, we can, we'll update as we need to, but we don't wanna- I don't wanna be-
You and Amanda working on it, it's gonna be perfect.
Oh, wow, okay, so, we will get it to you as soon as we can, and then just keep in mind, we can update as we go. We don't wanna be hasty and pull the trigger, but we don't wanna keep holding it up and try and make it perfect and perfect and perfect.
Yep, yep.
It's a work in progress, it will all come together.
It'll be better than what we have now.
Exactly. Alright, so, is that all from the website committee, you're all set? Alright.
Yes, thank you.
Let's move on to item, item five, Town Administrators Report, Eric.
Okay, let me just share my screen here real quick. Okay, I'm not gonna go through most of this because it's posted and you've already seen it, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay, so, what I'm gonna do is just talk about the things that have changed since I originally sent this out. First, one thing I missed is, originally, we had agreed to authorize the library to overspend by fifteen hundred dollars when they needed to do their whole water system, pressure tank, all that repair. So, I'm gonna have to go through with that. It looked like maybe we could avoid that, but they also need to buy some plexiglass shields and some other things as part of their plan for reopening. So, just letting you know that that's gonna happen. We're also putting, the building official's been putting a lot of time in lately. We have redone completely the racking system in the land use and building department, and we're going through kind of a major file reorganization down there, which is coming out awesome, but we're burning a bunch of staff time to do it. Right now, we're okay on hours, because he was under on his hours up to this point for the year. I probably will have to authorize some overage at some point in the next month or so, because we are gonna run a little over on that, but we're not gonna run a lot over on that.
Eric, isn't that really, isn't that really the building department secretary doing most of that?
Well, she's doing some of it, but it's really her plus Carol plus Ed plus Jim, because they have to all be able to access the information, and right now, without all of them working and doing it collectively, it was gonna be kind of a cluster. So, that's kinda what, what's in the way.
So, that was, that was the money that, or the, the measurements and everything we talked about as far as the slide racks, to move, get rid of all the file cabinets?
Exactly.
So, that's finally happening.
That has happened, now we're just doing the cleanup to make it work. I have started discussions with a labor attorney. Right now, I'm just using CCM's free consult. We'll see how that goes and see whether we need to, we have enough money in the legal budget, but as we start to do negotiations with reducing hours for union employees, we're gonna need the advice of a specific labor attorney. So, I'm starting that process now, we're gonna see how it goes. I'm not saying he's the person we're gonna use, but we're at least gonna, I'm at least gonna examine that. Next up, we got the initial bid back from the connectivity grant. So, I asked, so I tried using EZIQC, which is the bidding process, from Capital Regional Council of Government, the one they negotiated, and the bid actually came in way under what we were expecting, which is wonderful. Other than that one, you know, is, is basically pass-through money from the state anyway. So, what I'm looking at now is seeing whether we can run a couple things as part of that grant and get a little extra out of it, since the initial bids did come in under. So, thinking about possibly a gazebo and maybe a couple picnic tables and maybe a bike repair station. I haven't really worked it out, but I'm thinking along those lines for the connectivity grant. On the flip side of that, the all-up costs for doing the transfer station look like they're gonna come in somewhere around eighty thousand dollars, which is quite a bit over the bid original budget that CIP had allocated. But CIP also wasn't really contemplating any serious electrical work as part of the problem, or as part of the work done there. And one of the things which is clear is that one of the primary things we need is an overhaul of the electrical system that does that. And we can talk a little bit later when we get to that, about the RFP for that. The other thing I got today, which was a little annoying, was a notice from KERMA saying that our ransomware policy, which is included free as part of our KERMA membership, basically, they're jacking up the deductibles from ten thousand to a hundred thousand and decreasing their maximum liability from two million to one million. And they're doing that basically because they're paying out a lot of money, and since it was just kind of a freebie for membership, they are doing that. We could pursue a separate policy, and we can talk about that. But I just found out about it about an hour ago, so I have not done much research on that at all.
What's the cost?
For what?
For the ransomware?
Mean a standalone policy?
Well, through them.
Nothing, it's part of, they do that just for free for all the KERMA members.
So, they're not gonna have, they're not gonna have a policy available through them at all?
No, they, they have a policy, Adrian, but KERMA doesn't charge extra like that. They, they put it in, if we're paying a hundred and five thousand dollars, it's all included in the policy.
Correct.
What Eric is saying is because they have upped their deductible, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is ridiculous, I mean, that's a joke. You do need, Eric, to look at a separate policy or rider from another insurance carrier that, you know, we might figure out what it's gonna cost us, but it's probably gonna be extremely expensive.
Sure.
But Adrian, there's no extra cost.
No, but we're talking about ransomware here, right?
Yeah, hacking.
Yeah, generally hacking ransomware, that kinda thing. You know, their, their point is just that this is, you know, the, the claims both within KERMA and also countrywide are freaking skyrocketing, and, you know, they, they had to renegotiate with their reinsurer.
No, I, I get, I get all that, I'm just, you know, let's see what the prices come back at, and then we'll discuss it. I just don't know that we, as a small town, as small as we are, need to be kinda worried about that. If somebody hacks us and tells us we can't have our computers back, we just pull out the paper files at this point. I just don't, I don't, I don't see us paying five or six thousand dollars a year for a ransomware policy thing when we can go back to last week's backup, you know?
What was, what was the deductible, Eric, the change from ten thousand to a hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay, correct. Let's move on, Eric, Adrian-
Hear what the policy looks like.
Yep, understood, okay, so if you want me to pursue an independent policy, I certainly will.
So, we gotta know what it costs.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Don't go crazy, but get us a number.
Right, okay. So, the other thing is, next month, we had to think about doing two things. One, you ought to do your administrative review for me, and you ought to do the same thing for Attorney O'Brien. And you should probably make a decision at this meeting whether you want to do that in an open forum and in, or an executive session. As far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter to me, it just depends on what you want to do.
I think, I think it should concern you, yours should definitely be an executive session.
I mean-
I think it should be an executive session, and we should, we should sit there and publicly put your review out or whatever we put out as a public document, so that Tom can see it.
That, that's a great idea.
I would vote for executive session as well.
I would vote for an executive session also.
Okay, and do you wanna do the same thing for Attorney O'Brien, since technically we are supposed to be reviewing his performance yearly, and now would be the time?
Do it at the same meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I have no preference one way or the other on his, but I think given the amount of feedback for you, it might be more appropriate to be an executive.
Okay, that is fine. And I would also say that I think it would probably be appropriate for the ordinance we're contemplating to do that next month, not this month, this month, just gather feedback, make sure you all get to read it, we should publicize it, and then do it next month, since we didn't really put it on the agenda, so it's not really fair to the, the town to pass an ordinance without really having review.
Well, do we need to add something to our, we probably need to set up some sort of review amongst the selectmen prior to the meeting, executive meeting. We should be prepared for your review and Dennis's as well. How do we wanna do that, any ideas?
I don't know.
I'm confused, if you, Eric was talking about the minor ordinance.
Yeah, he just got done talking about his review and Dennis's review. We need to set something up in order to do that review. Otherwise, we're just gonna go and say, what, we love you, you did a great job, but blah, blah, blah?
Yes, I, I anticipate doing that.
I don't know that that's an appropriate way to approach it.
Adrian, we, we can, we can get together outside of this and communicate amongst ourselves and come up with a format that will, we can give him his review appropriately, so.
In the interest of transparency, that would not be appropriate, Mr. Mabara.
We're doing this in executive session, aren't we?
His review, but we need, they, the folks need to know exactly what our format's gonna be for his review, and, you know.
Okay, would you like to sit there and put together the checklist and the outline for his review?
I will gladly do that and send it around to folks to get feedback so we're prepared going in.
That sounds like what I was thinking, good job, alright.
Before we did it.
You got it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, next up, some pictures. That is all the electrical crap that was torn out of Public Works as we rewired for the lights and worked off the vast majority of the OSHA violations we had in that building.
Did they take that dumpster, or was that ours?
That's our dumpster, it will get called the John Scrap next time around.
Did we pull the ballast out so we can get aluminum prices on that and, and not get dinged for chemicals?
No, we didn't go through and tear the ballast out, as far as I know.
That would've been probably a good idea. Might wanna call John Scrap, see what he wants us to do. Because now you've got a mixed dumpster.
What's the dates on those ballasts? That's the scary part.
Right, yeah.
Some of them do have PCVs, the older ones.
I mean, he might not care. I just don't want to make sure that he knows what he's getting.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay, it's only time. All right. So there's going to be an item later. One of the members of the audience wants us to put up a notice board that was purchased at some point in the past under the reign of Bob Burbank. And uh, so I took a quick picture from the owner's manual of what it looks like. It looks something like this. And here is the full size unit with the basketball in the forecourt, so you can kind of gauge what size it is. It's roughly four feet by four feet. That's not, the front is not actually white. This is Plexiglas. This is just a protective coating. I didn't want to peel it off until we put it in. If you open this up, there's one of those black backgrounds with the little slots that you can stick numbers in. Um, that is what is, that is what was purchased for the town's notice board.
Now, this was a, wasn't this a rec commission thing?
Couple of years ago.
I I'm not sure who, that's what I heard. It was purchased from the rec commission.
Absolutely the rec commission.
But, you know, so maybe Jeff can weigh in on where it was originally intended to be at.
It was intended to be at at the town hall.
Okay.
But but there's, if there's no space for it and that's not where you want it, I know that the rec commission had said it could go to Long, it could go to the field down at Long Hill, it could go to the transfer station. So, but we'll let, well, that's on the agenda, so we'll talk about it then.
Okay.
Would that, would that be most appropriate for the rec commission to decide, considering it's their sign?
Well, they just want us to give them approval as to where to put it. I mean, Eric, we're gonna, we'll have that conversation when we get to it. Let's go.
Yeah. So next thing I wanted to show you, we we are talking about as we do the transfer station, we are going to add kind of two things to the right side as we do it. The first is, this is this part right here where my cursor is, is the original wall. And we're going to cut this wall back a little bit and add a spot potentially for a future fourth compactor and wire it for a fourth compactor. Um, the second thing we're going to do is where this slopes straight here, we're going to cut this wall back as a forty-five degree angle. This is actually where that shed is right now. And all the uh, the bins or all the uh, like Salvation Army and stuff like that are lined up there. So we're not actually really losing any space. The goal is to put the mattress uh cargo container right there. So it can still be pulled out in this direction. This is drawn a little incorrectly. But it's sized, so this can go there. We can get it all for compactors in the future just to free up a little space above on the other side. So when we start getting overloaded, we can have full rows of dumpsters on the other side. Um, the next picture over, that is our new server um that is actually in and running. And we have, for the first time in many years, done a full backup from both our two existing servers. Um, and we have a raid something, something, something array. Um, and the objective of that is that lower unit right there that the cursor's on, that one is password protected, but you can't, basically it's set up so that array has to be manually configured if you're ever going to take the data back off of it. And the objective being that that data is not corruptible from the outside world. Um, so that is the town's, you know, backup. We are going to consider an offsite backup storage too, because the one thing we really couldn't recover of, you know, is the UFO hitting the building and uh, you know, or a major fire or something like that. So in the future, we need to think about offsite backup in addition to this. But we at least now for for the first time in a long time have a real backup system for for pretty much all the sensitive data in the building. So I'm quite happy with that. Uh, the lower two pictures are the new sliding shelves in the building department. If you walk into the building department now, it's incredibly open because we had, we were able to take out an enormous number of uh the storage units and replace them with a much more efficient stackable, slideable storage units. So that's what those pictures are right there. And that's it. That's all I got for administrators report unless there's something you want other or other questions that you have.
Selectmen, you guys have any other questions for Eric?
Nope.
How how low were the bill, the bids on the connectivity grant?
Uh, about a hundred thousand under budget, so about two thirds of the budget.
Oh, so we need to make sure that we use that money in some manner.
Well, there's some limitations on it. There's only so much you can, because you bid for a certain thing. You know, I think I can stretch it a little bit, but I can't like do something completely separate somewhere else with that money. So I'm still, I gotta call in to the kind of program manager for that. And we're going to talk it through. And I got a meeting Friday with the contractor because I want to make sure, absolutely sure, you know, that bid has everything that's in the drawings and we're not missing anything too. Um, but yeah, that's good news, certainly.
Let's sit there and see if we can find out from uh from the people managing that that grant, what our uh, our opportunities are to sit there and extend and make use of those dollars as best we can. Um, even if we sit there and draw the connectivity down to the field more and and get something done down there that, maybe we can help the the entities that are there, whether it's the library or the food. I know it's not a town organization, but the food pantry and those. So let's be creative and try to sit there and see if we can use those dollars.
Yeah, I certainly will. Yeah.
Worst case, I mean, if anybody's ever been down to Church Street in Vernon, um, I I think that's kind of what Eric had in mind with his suggestions. Am I correct, Eric?
Yep. Yep, a little eating pavilion and a bike repair stand and a few other things. Just because it's the catch weight point, you know, for a lot of people.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a very nice, that's a very nice addition in Vernon. If we could afford to do something like that in the end, it would be a great asset.
Sounds great.
Okay, I will keep plugging on that.
Okay, let's go to number six, old business. Um, six A, town personnel policies.
So I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion here, but I sent the, all the selectmen got a copy of Dennis's revised version of the personnel policies. And do any of you have any questions or comments or concerns about those policies?
I'll have to admit, I haven't read them. Sorry, Dennis.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll have to sit there. I I will promise to read them for next meeting. Any of the other uh selectmen need to sit there and have this discussed today?
No, I I think, I think um, if we just have any notes, let's all forward them to to Eric to sort of cobble them together and.
Okay.
And Eric, before I forget, we just want to, you want to thank um Carol Lee for facilitating getting the that worked out for the for the building department downstairs. That was really something she jumped to help in on.
Yeah, and she's been spending a lot of time down there with Ed and Susan and Jim, helping them get the place cleaned up and in a, you know, reasonably well organized.
She got it measured for us and moved it forward. So just, we want to thank her for that. That's all.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, it looked great down there.
Yeah, it really does.
And Susan thought I was crazy when I brought it up.
Yep.
Okay. Um, six B is the community connectivity grant. I mean, Eric, is there anything else you need to add to that?
Nope, not at this point.
All right. Uh, six C, the email provider, office three sixty-five.
I don't have anything to add at this point.
Are we moving forward with that now that the website's getting close? Eric?
As far as I know, the last time I left, the selectmen still had some objection to it.
So at the last meeting, at the last meeting, you brought it up again and I and I withdrew my objection.
Actually, I thought the objection was monetary.
It was monetary. I told them that we we looked at it. There is like, isn't a cheaper version anywhere. I did look at some other options as for how to structure it, but it's it's too involved.
Okay, all right, let's leave this till next. I mean, Eric, we don't need to do this at this meeting anyway. Let's do this at the next meeting.
We kind of do so that way they're not reprogramming the website.
Adrian, Adrian, I understand that. Wait till next, next meeting and you'll be able to do it if if we can't do something else.
I I disagree with that. This is the whole week.
Adrian, I'm asking you nicely on this one. Let it go for one month. You don't need it right now.
It's on the agenda, Jeff, right?
I understand.
Can we just?
It's been on the agenda for the last four months.
Can we make a motion to move forward with the email provider?
Eric is smiling because he knows that Google, he he knows he's looked at Google. You know, you've looked at Google. You know that we could sit there and potentially do it. And if we did it, it would be free and everyone would get emails. If we go with three sixty-five, we are not getting emails for everyone in the community that needs emails.
Eric, I thought there was an issue with Google. We had to pay under theirs as well.
We do.
So Jeff, what are you, what are you catching that he's not?
I'm catching that the the way that the school does it is the way that town should do it because the school does not pay for their emails.
So are we looking into it? What I'm, I guess I'm confused. Are we looking into the Google?
I was supposed to be looking into it from this meeting. So if you give me one month, I'll sit there and get you an answer.
Well, can we get an answer before the next meeting so that when we go into next meeting, we're ready to move forward?
Absolutely. I will schedule a meeting with Eric and Amanda with the technical individual from Google that we should have met with three months ago.
Fine, I'll move it to, I I will withdraw till next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, six D, annual report. Amanda, do you want to add to that or Eric, whichever one of you wants to talk about?
Amanda, you can take that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to pipe in. Um, we're still waiting for the, well, at least I'm still waiting for the auditor's report. Until it's posted, but I can really post it anytime.
I'll I'll unmute. Uh, this is Barbara. That's, it's done. The last copy I have though still had draft across it. So I just emailed Mike today to remind him that I do need a final um with that um draft logo taken off each page. And then Amanda, I will get it to you as soon as I receive it. Thanks.
Barbara, can you, um, can you, when we go to present, when that gets presented to the Board of Finance and accepted, can you also, if if the, is the auditor going to do a presentation for that?
I was just talking to Eric about that today. That would be my suggestion that maybe not in May because they're still finishing the budget, perhaps in June if they're meeting. I could check with Michael and the board if that gate works out to have it as a Zoom meeting.
That's perfect. I I have no objection to that. What I would like is for you to have ready for that meeting. Um, so that the Board of Finance can put it into the record and the auditor can can add anything to it. A checklist that we need to have completed for audits going forward for that, for that office. Because my understanding is one of the things that held this up was just some minor checkoffs that we probably should have mailed out right away at the close of business last year. So we need to probably get
Okay.
A formal checklist together for that.
Yeah, the only one I'm aware of is the the attorney letters, which is something they initiate, but I will definitely check on that.
Well, whether it's them that initiates or us, we need to, we need to have a list from him, you know, and and understood by you as to what that office is required to do so that we don't keep having these delays on the audits. That's all.
I will definitely um include that.
And that way it can get put into the record and the Board of Finance will be able to follow up with, you know, yourself or whoever's in that position, however many years down the road, to be able to say, are these things done? So the Board of Finance can do their job a little better as well. Thank you.
Okay. Six E is the Memorial Day Parade.
Paula?
So I had a conversation with um John McCall. He is the chair of the committee. And they had originally contacted us and said that they wanted to cancel the parade. Um, I had a great conversation with him this weekend. So far, um, since the school's been closed, there's been two parades that um have kind of been led by the school. And I I said to him, I have an idea how we can have the Memorial Day Parade, do it safely. And I shared my thoughts with him, you know, that we could, rather than having people march like we've done in the past, everybody can stay in their cars. Um, follow a similar route that the school used, not the same one, because from what I understand, it it took them about an hour and forty-five minutes because they did a really big loop in town. Um, so we would revise the route. And uh, he liked the idea. He said, you know, everybody can meet at the school and revise the route. Um, whoever's in the car together has to be from the same households, um, stay in their cars. They can mark the outside of their car with whatever organization they're with. Um, and we talked a little bit about the speeches. I had kind of shared with him, we can do some pre-recorded speeches, but he he felt that we would skip that part because when they decided to cancel the parade, they didn't get a speaker and he felt that whoever the speaker was would really be kind of shuffling or, you know, they don't have a lot of time to pull something together. So I also mentioned, um, after the parade is done, we can still hopefully do the laying of the wreath at the memorial. And um, you know, Amy Knox's family, I kind of threw it out there and this is up to the committee or whoever. Um, I said, um, maybe one of the kids can lay the wreath. And then she's got a kid that plays the trumpet, maybe her her daughter plays the trumpet. And then he was kind of saying, um, well, maybe I can reach out to the minister in town and, you know, the ideas were kind of flowing. And I I offered a generator and a speaker and a uh microphone and we can stream that through our Facebook page, do it live, so that after the parade is over, people can kind of watch through Facebook. So I shared with him, you know, these ideas. He he was going to talk to the committee and send out a me, um, an email this weekend. And I told him that I would update the board tonight. And I I I would like to move forward with it because I think it's it's a good thing for the community to look forward to. Um, a lot of the fairs are being canceled and um, even though the parade was more specific, you know, with the teachers recently, um, I heard that other committee members came out and were excited to see the the cars go by because, you know, something to look forward to and brighten their day. So um, wanted to get the thoughts from the other board members, but I I think it'd be a good feel-good event and a little bit of normalcy, hopefully. And I think we could do it safely and and smart. And um, and, you know, John seemed to be excited about it. And I'd like to update him on what your thoughts are.
I think that's a great idea, Paul. You know, that also Jerry Wright is planning on doing something related to, um, you know, since he's not participating in Rolling Thunder, he's planning on doing something to honor veterans over Memorial Day weekend. So um, if you can sit there and keep working with the the um parade committee, that would be great. I think that would be a positive thing to do for the community. Anybody else?
I'm all for it also. Good idea, Paula.
You're muted. Jeff, anything for you?
I'm good with it.
I'm all set. Okay. So Paula, if you can keep um coordinating with John, if there's anything that I can do to assist, I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll I'll give him a call tomorrow and tell him that the board's supporting it. So I'll find out what his committee thinks and we'll hopefully move forward with it.
Okay. Uh, on to new business, um, we have seven A, the town accounting software. So do we want to just combine this with seven B, which is a meeting of the Board of Education?
So do we want to just combine this with seven B, which is a meeting of the board of education to discuss the combined finance department? Okay, so we have a decision to make regarding town accounting software.
Hey Jeff, can I just interrupt real quick? Going back to the Memorial Day Parade, do we need to pass a motion or anything to get that in the works?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. There's already a committee.
Okay.
So, I mean, you're, you're offering to, to facilitate with the committee. And Eric's in place, so you should be fine.
Well, we did make a motion to cancel the parade.
No, actually you didn't. You made a motion not to cancel the parade and to punt on that. So you still have not canceled anything. So I guess you don't need to un-cancel anything.
Except for email. We canceled it.
I thought we canceled it, Paula.
No, the committee canceled it. Remember, we said we're going to wait and then we got the email from the committee saying that they had canceled it.
Okay.
So the committee needs to un-cancel it.
All right. Well, I'll talk to John tomorrow and is that the best way of going forward from here?
Whatever you think is appropriate.
You could tell the committee, the Memorial Day Committee that we're okay with them uncancelling. And making it a car parade. Or motorcycle parade, a vehicle parade with no gathering point to sit there and have people congregating. Okay, so we won't do that.
Now, I'm assuming that means the board of selectmen is going to support that by being in the parade?
I already have my car ready, Eric.
Excellent.
Me too.
I am out of town.
Jeff should ride his motorcycle. And, and our one veteran, I'm sure is going to, is going to do whatever he needs to do. If he participates or not, but we appreciate all his service. And let's not, oh, and Eric also, thank you for your service. We'll give you that little thumbs up already. So, thank you. Jeff, you weren't in the military, were you?
No, I was not.
Okay. So, and Scott, you are not in the military, were you? Because I don't know.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so Eric.
It had to been the Civil War, right?
Eric and Adrian get Civil War. Eric and Adrian, thank you very much. We appreciate all the things that you guys have done during your time in the service. Thank you very much. Let's see, the town accounting software. So I, I'm just going to give you my, my take on this whole thing. I've been on this board for five years. Ever since the first year, I believed the town should be on QuickBooks. I know Adrian and Eric have been in multiple meetings related to the town accounting software. And we have to start making, we have to make a decision related to this. If it was up to me and only me, we would make this decision right now and be done with it. But we know we have to be involved with the board of education and our own internal finance department. So I'll let Adrian and Eric talk as to where they're at with what they want to do related to the software. Either one of you, go do it.
Eric?
Okay, so what I think at this point is the goal would be to have a combined meeting with the board of selectmen and the board of ed. Because what we're really talking about doing is having a combined finance office and figuring out what software is reasonable for that combined finance office. Now, at the same time, we have a fairly local QuickBooks consultant who's been a town bookkeeper and used QuickBooks, who's also a, you know, a CPA and accountant. That will present to the combined entity and be able to, you know, give the town essentially a proposal on what it would cost to incorporate. To, you know, essentially transition over to QuickBooks and what that looks like from the town's perspective and the school's perspective. And I think once that presentation is then done, then the combined board can make whatever decision they want for whatever software they want.
Okay, yeah, so we could put it off to the presentation. I mean, it's pretty much a no-brainer for the town to be on QuickBooks. The school is a little different, but it's definitely doable. And there are a variety of reasons for it, but primarily most schools have more than one location. You know, even if you have a grammar school and a, and a high school, that's considered two locations. So we don't have that because we're part of RAM. So it lends itself to us being able to use QuickBooks for the school. You know, if we, if it was a little different situation, we had that other school, we, we might want to consider a different program. But with just the one, it should be very doable and certainly long-term, it's going to be more cost-effective for us. So, and the biggest thing will be for the finance office is much easier to go out and find someone that is a very good QuickBooks bookkeeper than it is to find someone to go out and, and be knowledgeable in your individualized financial software. So that's one of the reasons that it's a much better idea overall. It opens up your hiring pool tremendously, so.
Who would get the final say on the software? Would it be, I mean, does it have to be a mutual agreement or what if, what if there's not an agreement?
Well, you know, I don't know, to be honest with you. If the agreement's already been made to, to look at combining the finance offices. It would make the most sense to have the town and the school on the same software. There isn't any reason that the school cannot be on QuickBooks. We think it's appropriate to have a meeting so that we can inform them of what we're looking at and why. You know, but ultimately it probably should be the towns, but I think it's appropriate for the, for the town to include the, the school board. You know, and, and try to bring them along and explain to them why and how it would work. Because basically it comes down to this. If you, if we go to QuickBooks and we don't like it, transitioning to something else, we're not really at much of a loss. If we go to something else and then go to QuickBooks later, it's going to be a more expensive proposition, so.
And QuickBooks is more cost-effective, correct?
Long-term, yes. I think the initial in-cost is pretty close to the same, like the first year setup. But then every year after that, QuickBooks is literally half the price of the other software, so.
What, what did they tell you the software cost was for any of the options that they were taking, they were thinking about? Eric?
About 10K, right?
There's really two that we were looking at near the end. One was a company called BMSI. And one was Edmunds Scientific. BMSI was first year cost, including transition, was somewhere around 15,000. And then it was about 10,000, you know, per year thereafter. So not inexpensive. And Edmunds was in the same ballpark, other than a little more cost upfront. But the, the final cost depended a lot. There were so many options. You know, you basically got to choose which parts of its package that you wanted. But they were definitely going to be considerably more expensive software packages than QuickBooks. Long-term costs for QuickBooks are definitely lower.
We're, we're somewhere in the neighborhood with, with support of probably 5K for QuickBooks on a yearly basis.
Upfront cost for QuickBooks can't be greater than $2,500. I mean, yes, the installation, but the software costs.
It's, yeah, but there's, you have to understand it's software and training. So we're going to be paying for training our staff, bringing everybody up to speed. So that's, that's the in-cost.
And the positive thing is, at least at the, I don't know in the treasurer's office right now, but I know at the school, they're at least using, they're at least familiar with QuickBooks to some extent from doing the student activity funds and some of the other funds. Even the preschool program, I believe, is run currently on QuickBooks. So they at least have some understanding.
Our, our current, our current building department is on QuickBooks and the treasurer's, or the, and the town clerk's office used to be on QuickBooks.
Well, they used Quickin and, yeah, close enough. But I, the school I know uses, uses it for the student activities fund and for the preschool program.
Yeah, they do actually. They're doing invoices with it, so.
Okay, so let's get to the point of scheduling this meeting.
We got an email with dates.
Yes, we have an agenda item number seven. We have a May 15th, May 19th, May 21st, May 29th, June 2nd. I'm assuming that Eric, these were from the school or the board of ed?
We got those from the board of ed as what their times were available. I figured since our meeting was before that, it would be easier for them to give us dates. We picked dates. You adopted it this meeting, their meeting comes in two days. You both have adopted it. And then we'll line up the, the vendor to give us the spiel on QuickBooks for the combined meeting.
How about 5:19 or 5:21? Anybody on 5:19?
Either day.
I can, I can do, we're talking, what time? Do we, do we have a time?
6:00 AM.
Seven o'clock.
Then you're out.
So presumably those would be evening meetings. That would be the presumption. We'd be looking at a seven, I would assume we'd be looking at a 7:00 PM meeting, although honestly, I didn't ask them to specify an exact time.
5:19. 7:00 PM on 5:19. Okay. I motion to hold a combined meeting of the board of selectmen and board of education on May 19th at 7:00, 7:00 PM to discuss forming a combined finance office as well as discuss software implementation for the combined office.
I'll second that.
Anybody else? Any discussion? All those in favor? I.
I.
Okay, 5:00, so 5:19. Hopefully no one has problems down. Okay, is there any other discussion on that point?
My only, so, so these are the dates that the board of ed have already talked about and they, they said that they're available? Or should we give them another date just in case they talk on Wednesday and somebody's, okay. All right, so they, they've already agreed on these dates?
They've already agreed.
Yes, those dates came from Shannon as the dates they could make.
Okay.
Seven D plans for reopening. Oh, sorry, seven C, transfer station operations.
Okay, so I wanted to talk about two things in that vein. The first is we held an RFP for the electrical upgrades at the transfer station. Just quick backstory, somewhere around six years ago, something like that, a decision was made. We at one time had a rotary phase converter that ran all, that provided three-phase current to run our compactors. It broke. A decision was made not to fix it, but to go with static phase converters because they were cheap. We've had problems pretty consistently since then, both with reliability of the units and them not properly driving the three-phase motors. So they basically have a capacitor start. So on startup, they drive all three legs. But when they're actually running, they're driving two of the three legs. So they're producing basically two-thirds the total power that they're rated for. It's been a problem. We need to address it. We need to go back to a rotary phase converter. One big enough to run two compactors simultaneously. So that's what we put in the RFP and that's what we bid out. The problem is, you know, we're in COVID-19 and this is one of those kind of awkward projects. That even though it's not a huge project, because it has to be done along with trenching. The electrician's going to be tied up for a lot of days, not necessarily working eight hours a day, but he's going to have to keep coming back as the project moves along. And so what we did is we, we specifically sent the RFP to all the local electricians that have worked for the town in the past. Which is Lenko plus Ackert plus Seaward Electric. And then we put it on the state site and put it on our website. Unfortunately, Lenko was the only guy who bid on the project. So we have a single bid for that. Now, I'm confident Lenko can do the work, but, you know, I'm a little disappointed that we only got one response back from the RFP.
What Eric's trying to say is he threw a party and nobody came. We did reach out to the other contractors. I, I reached out to one myself personally. And he really just didn't have any interest because of the way the project was structured as far as time. He would have to have somebody on site for four hours one day and then maybe two hours another day. And it just dragged out for too long for him to be interested, so. You know, it wasn't an issue with the way the bid was written. It wasn't an issue with anything structuralized, other than that the fact that it was just multiple days on-site kind of spread out. It just wasn't a good fit for them, so.
I have a quick question. Is there any way that, so what kind of window would we need to do to do all the trenching? As far as a time window? Is that, is that why he has to come back and go and?
Well, so, no, so the, the electrical guys would have to be there for, they'd have to be there for trenching to put pipe in. Then they have to come back for when the wall's poured so they can put their, their pop-throughs. Then they have to come back to do, to do knocks against. Then they have to come back again. Once everything's placed to do wiring, you know, and then they can, after that, they can come back and do their finish-up wiring. But, you know, you have the, the town crews doing one thing, somebody else is doing another thing. There was a bunch of different moving parts that they just weren't comfortable with.
Okay, I just didn't know if it would be worth it to close, to close at Wednesday or just have a full, one-week window to get some of the work done. As an option.
Not really, because it's, it wouldn't be that quick.
Okay, just, just throwing it out there.
Eric, Eric actually discussed that, asked me the same question. I don't know that that's feasible. Just with the amount of stuff that they have to do and, you know.
You know, the issue is they're going to get in there, they're going to work for two days and they're going to get out of there, then they're going to come back in two days.
Exactly.
And then they got to clean up and get ready for Saturday.
Right.
Right, and, and that is one of the inefficiencies of this project. We made it very clear in the RFP that we intended to run the transfer station Wednesdays. You know, so the workdays would be Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, Fridays for this project. Now, the, the thing I would like to consider also, and that we can, we can talk about that separate from the RFP. But I would also like to consider, because one of the problems we're going to have is what we have to do basically is cut off all the compactors. Disconnect all the electrical so we can do all the walls as fast as we can and do the trenching. So we're going to be running about half the transfer station open. Unlike the last part of the wall where we could only do a quarter at the time. This time, we really can't do that. You know, so what I would like to do is get an agreement to shut down bulky waste and metal only for however long it takes, but preferably less than 30 days. So I, I'd like to throw that into the discussion also as we, we talk about this. Because that's the other issue we're going to have. And if we're going to do it, we're going to have to put the notification out to the public pretty soon that that's going to happen.
I, I did ask Eric about this.
It's going to be tough with all the cleanups.
Yeah.
It's going to be tough with all the time, you know, bring cleanups.
Yeah, it's about, it's about 300 bucks for a mailer, to send a mailer out to everybody. The thing is honestly, bulk, bulky's been crazy the last, Eric, you said we, we had a huge number of halls out, right?
Yeah, we're, we're way up on bulky and we're way, way up on cardboard. Because everybody's ordering their stuff from Amazon, so the amount of cardboard we're getting in is, right? And I think everybody's, because they're home, you know, they're all cleaning out their basements and their backyards, so.
So, but if we gave everybody two weeks' notice and then close it for the month that we're going to work. The, the problem is if we try to keep it open, we're, our hall fees are going to go up dramatically because we're going to be, you're going to have to pull that one dumpster you have every time you've got anything in it. Because otherwise you're going to fill up halfway through your next shift. If, if it's a quarter full, it's going to it's going to fill up on Saturday automatically. So we'd be better off telling people to hold it and then come in at the end of the month, you know? Rather than trying to pull a dumpster every Wednesday, pull a dumpster every Saturday and then hope that we don't run into issues.
Now, these dumpsters, these dumpsters, dumpsters have, uh, they have indoors, right? Like it's swinging open?
They do.
So why, could, could we park them down by the green shed since carts closed? Just open the back end and let people throw things in, then when it gets to a certain point, close the door, we'd have to throw it all over the top?
It, it's not advisable. It's a safety risk for people because they're going to have to go into the dumpster. And then we're risking, some of these dumpsters have kickholes in the bottom and, and sharp edges.
Just asking the question, that's all.
Yeah, no.
Throw it over the top of the dumpster or throw things in?
Yeah. Can I sue for my rotator cuff? I mean, that's the thing, it's nice. Most people come in a pickup truck and they're halfway there, right?
The answer is no, you can't sue for your rotator cuff, so. Any other questions?
So Eric, Eric, do you think it's worth trying to have an extra dumpster there? For people that want to pull up with a pickup truck and offload halfway?
I think Eddie and I have been talking about where else we could shoehorn a dumpster in. You know, and get at least one or two on site. I mean, if we decided we wanted to run and we had to have bulky and scrap metal available during that whole period of time, what I would plan on doing is having to pay a Public Works employee to come in in the middle of the day with the backhoe and crush, you know, in the middle. That's the only other thing I could really think of, which is kind of our emergency fallback on a Saturday if we start getting, you know, overbooked anyway. But, you know, then you got to pay an employee to come in just to, just to crush a dumpster. That's, that's a tough sell for me.
So we're, so we're paying about a hundred bucks because it's a four-hour minimum, right?
Yeah, three-hour minimum, but.
Jeff, do you, do you feel that strongly that you want to try to book it?
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking the fallout from that for a month's period is going to be significant.
You're probably going to have some angry residents.
We are going to have some angry residents for sure.
I don't disagree with that. But I mean, the, the transfer station has to get fixed.
Yeah, I agree with you. But I, I've just said if we provide dumpsters and people want to put the stuff in. And then if there's really heavy items that scrap metal that people can't get in the dumpster, I guess we could put it out at the side.
No. Don't get into that.
Well.
We don't want to get into that.
Listen, moving ahead and moving forward, we're always going to have people that are angry. It is what it is, so.
I'm just thinking, I think a month is a long time. Is there any way we could do something down at the transfer sta, I mean, at the, at the town garage temporarily? For scrap metal and bulky? Like build, uh, you know where that sand berm is, you know, excavate it or just, you know, bring them in on the side so we can use them down there? Do we have any temporary blocks or something we could put up? Just a thought, another location.
I just think you're asking for other problems, so.
Who's going to monitor that site?
Paul, would you just volunteer?
I just eat my bonbons all day, I get told.
Paul is going to check.
I thought you were allergic to bonbons.
Make sure it all works, so.
I think if we could get it down to two weeks, I think it would be doable, but I think a month is excessive. Or if we could just get one in there and alternate them every week, we could have bulky waste one week, scrap metal the next week.
You know, that, that's going to be, somebody's going to get their week wrong and they're going to be up.
Well, at least you're trying to provide.
I think it's easier for people just to know for this month, you're, you can't bring anything down. I mean.
Well, exactly. How about you promote Adrian and, and my, my social media friends on the board? How about we promote the fact that we're going to make some changes and adjustments and we would appreciate the, the residents to accommodate the upgrades that we're trying to make.
I mean, we have been talking about the transfer station repairs for over a year, so I don't think it'll become a supplies. You know?
No. Now you're going to get down.
To us sending out the mailer for three hundred bucks?
No, I, I don't have a problem with that either.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize Eric to send out a mailer with notification of closing the transfer station for thirty days, thirty days to facilitate the repairs on the, the right side and close bulky waste for that time period.
So, so you're not, okay, let's go backwards. We're not closing the transfer station.
Sorry, closing bulky waste.
We're not going to have bulky waste for thirty days.
Or metal.
Okay.
Bulky waste or metal.
Yep.
Just better get the town crew ready because they're going to be cleaning up stuff on the side of the road.
For a maximum of thirty days.
Yeah.
Will, will another town allow our residents to go in and use?
No.
No, they will not.
Like we did?
Yeah.
Paul, you got any spare stickers for Columbia?
No. To your house, Adrian, they can dump it at your house.
He's got a long driveway.
Yeah, Wetlands would love that.
Okay. All right, does anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, do we want to discuss this any further? Eric, just let's make sure because you're going to be on the front line of this. Yep. What is your take?
Um, I think if we shut down one side, the reality is, and we're going with an open-topped, you know, unless I have a Public Works employee there ready to crush on a regular basis, there's no way we can have open-topped dumpsters just on one side, take all the, uh, all the household waste and all the recycling and all the bulky and all the metal. It's just not.
Because that's the thing to take into account too, is we're not going to have a compactor for household trash during this period. So we're going to need that extra dumpster spot just for household trash.
Okay.
Right.
So Eric, so you are in favor of closing bulky waste and the metal?
I am very definitely in favor of that.
That's all I needed to know. All right, anybody else?
Eric, can we just also put something on the, that residents should be aware to, to try to break down their trash as much as possible during that time period because we will not have compactors available for us?
Sure, we can put out a general message.
We can, we can use a portable generator? We can't run a generator to run the compactors on Saturdays and Wednesdays?
Where would we put them?
Just a portable generator, a three-phase generator.
To do what? Bring in, relocate one of the compactors to the other side? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, you said you have to cut, you, you were saying you had to cut all the power, right? We're not going to be able to run the compact.
Yeah, but we need them on the other side to get wired in.
Not wired in, if we temporarily connected them. We were going to do temporary connections in the beginning. And from the other side, that was the original plan.
So what, what would you do, like some type of, like plug system?
Yeah, well, they'd just put in a welder generator with a plug on it.
I haven't looked into the cost of what it's going to cost us to put a three-phase generator for, you know, for that period.
Be about at least three grand for the month.
What's the difference, what, what do we got paying tipping fees if we don't do that? What's the, you know, the delta?
How many, how many tips do we have a week right now on household?
Uh, generally, most weeks we can just about run one tip a week for household. It's not a ton.
So you're going to go to three though if you don't have a compactor?
Well, but remember, we're going to come in and we're going to have multiple dumpsters and we're going to come in and do like what we did when we had to use household and recycling a couple of weeks ago with open dumpsters. Because the compactor wasn't working again is, you know, we just came in and crushed it intermediate. And so we get fairly good compaction by crushing it. But the problem is, is that people fill it up to the top, then you crush it down to the third the next time. So you need multiple dumpsters to do it efficiently. But you can get pretty good compaction, you know, if you just keep mashing on it with the, with the backhoe, with the bucket.
And how many tips did you have that week?
I don't know.
You're fired.
Okay, so if you get, if you get that number, then you can go back to Jeff's delta and figure out if it'll work.
Right.
Just a thought, that's all.
What's, Jeff, do you have any idea what size three-phase we would need for that? Because you had looked at those at one point, didn't you?
Not very, not very much.
Not very much size-wise or not very much? You didn't look at it that much?
Uh, I'd have to go back and look at it. It's been a while since I took a look.
You'd need a twelve, to run one, you'd need a twelve to fifteen horse, you know, three-phase power source.
So you need fifteen K?
Yeah, but the, the other problem you have, I keep thinking this, is that you really can't just put them in place. And the ones we have are all set up right now to be there. I think there's one that we could come off the back of. Because most of them are sideloaded, so we'd have to disassemble the feed chute and reassemble the feed chute on the other side, you know, for a week. Because now we're changing the orientation by ninety degrees. And you really need to bolt them in place too. So we'd have to probably bolt them into the existing wall. So there, it's certainly not trivial to just reinstall the thing on the other side and connect it up with power.
All right, withdraw.
You, you did, you don't, you don't withdraw your idea. Good idea, it's a good thought.
Yeah.
Now we're going through the thought process trying to figure it out, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So i- if you, if you don't need anything that big, we could get a three-phase for about twenty-two hundred a month.
Okay, so, so Eric, we're, we're going to still go through with the motion that is on the table and vote on this about closing bulky waste and, and closing the metal for the thirty-day period. But if you find that there's a way that Jeff's idea can work, it might be beneficial for us. And we would like to know what the change is, like how many tips did you get? If you could send us an email during the week that you crushed, that would at least help us if we could afford Adrian's twenty-two hundred dollars a month, so.
Well, and you got twenty-two hundred a month, plus you're going to need Public Works.
Correct.
To move all that stuff, so. All right, so the motion's still on the table, are we voting?
Correct, we're going to vote right now. All in favor of, uh, the motion as presented regarding the elimination of the bulky waste and the metal for the month? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed?
Everyone opposed.
Okay. Let it be noted that Mr. Murray dissented. And we're going to move on.
Okay, before we move on, we never voted on the original motion, which was to accept the bid from Lenko, if you're comfortable with that. Or if not, tell me how you want to proceed.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Lenko.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion on the bid from Lenko? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Mr. Murray is two for two. We're going to move on.
I think we should have multiple bids on anything, no matter what.
I totally agree with you. The only reason that I even sit there and would do it is Lenko has been a very good to the town for the Public Works building and the town offices, so I don't have a bad.
I mean, I agree, but we, we put it out there and we did try.
Did try.
Okay. Let's go to seven D, plans for reopening.
So we are coming to the point where the governor is starting to slowly reopen ports, portions of the economy. The, the one thing I wanted to discuss initially is plans for senior transportation. Because I would like to sometime in June begin to go back to opening senior transportation back up to provide medicals only. I don't think it's appropriate to start the senior luncheon program yet because I think that's still too high-risk an environment. But I think at some point, we're going to need to start going back to doing senior medicals. And so I would like to get the board's feedback on that. And then if you guys have any, you know, particular ideas about what you want to go first in terms of the town? Or any priorities you have for this?
So when you say, when you say medicals, you mean non-emergency? You know, just routine eye exams and, and physicals and, okay.
Yes, yes. Because now we will have gone like basically two months without having any senior transportation medical services. So there will be a backlog of work for that.
The governor's orders allow us to open that back up, what, after twenty-something, twenty-third?
Well, remember, it's transportation. So we really closed it on our own. I mean, we could have, I mean, there definitely are towns that are still running transportation systems. So it's not that we can't do it. It's just that we don't really, it's a high-risk environment right now.
They're not having doctor's appointments anyways, to, to most, to some extent. I mean, Adrian would know more about that than the rest of us, but I have no problem with you opening up transportation for senior, for, for medical visits.
Yeah, I, I think the thing to do at this point would be to reach out to the drivers, see if they're comfortable coming back onboard. And, and let's see what their take back is. If they're on board with it, I think, you know, we, we could be without any issue. Personally.
Okay.
So as far as the remainder issue, Eric, I, I don't, I don't sit there and I mean, what would we even think about opening up?
We can open back up Town Hall within limits, right?
So we could consider opening parts of Town Hall back up to the public. That would probably mean us putting some physical controls and barriers in place. Plexiglass walls like everybody else is doing and stuff like that. If, you know, if that's the direction we're going to go, then I'm going to start figuring out what we have to do to, to get those built and acquired. The library has the same concerns. Their plan is basically to, or what we've discussed, is initially opening as a essentially curbside pickup service. So if you know what you want, you can kind of make the deal with them over the phone and then pick it up outside. You know, and then within, say, three weeks after that, then transition to the library being open with controls on the number of people that are there. Removing all the furniture so people can't sit down and stay. And then have shielding between the employees and the visitors for safety. You know, we still obviously have problems getting PPE in general. We did finally get an allotment from the state. And that allotment was a grand total of ten KM ninety-five masks for all the employees collectively in the town. And a couple of bottles of hand sanitizer. So the state has not exactly been great about giving us, you know, supplies. So, so that's, that's also an ongoing issue with that. I guess I'm just trying to get a little guidance and see whether you've got any specific feedback or you're looking to expedite the process. Or you're looking to slow it down or what it is that, that you would like.
The buses, the buses also have to be made safe also, right? You're going to have to put some division between the driver and the passengers.
I, I mean, I, I don't think it's, there's no practical way to do that because the majority of people that are getting transported are either wheelchair-bound or are limited mobility anyway. So the driver is going to end up interacting with those people. So the only way you could do it would be to require both the person being transported and the driver to maintain wearing a mask the whole time the transport is in place. And then have a disinfection protocol, you know, afterward. That's your only kind of practical way you can, you can run that. Not ideal by any means, but. Not ideal by any means, but, but definitely doable.
Well, we're gonna have to require that. The driver and the residents that are using the transportation wear masks. I mean, just as a bare minimum. As far as. That one I think we have to do because. You know, people have been putting off regular doctors' visits for multiple, multiple months, multiple weeks right now. Let's sit there and say to. Avoid coming in contact with anyone that might have COVID-19, so, but.
Sure.
There's a lot of. Visits that people have, are gonna have to take and gonna have to do, and we need to assist those seniors to do it.
My only concern right now is we're talking about doing this. You said other towns are still running transportation systems. Where are they getting their PPE from?
I don't know. I mean, the buses are still running, right? I mean, Mass Transit's still running. It's not really any different.
I know Mass, I, I know, I don't know about other towns. I know Womant had cut back dramatically on their runs.
Sure.
Ridership on all public transportation is down 75% minimum. I mean, so.
The buses are shielded, with the driver shielded and throwing a lot of passengers get in the back door of the public buses, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, but we just physically can't do that with our setup. Because the majority of people we're transporting need the lift gate ramp to get in the vehicle. So for most of them, that's not really an option. Some, good.
Listen, this, this is gonna be our new reality anyway. We're going to have to figure out how to do all of this, so. You know, I, I, I mean, if it was me and we could push this off another month, I would push it off another month, but I do think that you have individuals that. Are in need of those services. So we have to find the best way to be as safe for the drivers and as safe for the passengers as possible, but this is really the new reality, so we better figure out how to help these residents. But as far as your rest of your stuff, Eric, I mean, I, I believe that transportation should be the first thing you would do. I, I wouldn't even open up the Town Hall until our next meeting. You know, I would let it go past the May 20th deadline, move it into June, and then we can decide because. Are you having, Eric, a tremendous number of complaints from residents that you're not accomplishing their needs?
No, we're not actually. We're okay. I mean, the, the, the Town Hall is the, in a sense, I think. It's not the least important public service, but. We can, you know, there are workarounds for almost all the face-to-face interactions. The only thing that's really gonna be an issue in the next month is issuing the bloody permits for the transfer station. Because it's time for new stickers. And we gotta work through exactly how we do that.
Then let's be, let's be creative and have a line through the, the school parking lot and. You know, let's, let's, let's be creative as to how we do that, but as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't open up the Town Hall right now. I mean. What do we still have? We only have five residents that have COVID-19 confirmed cases? There's no reason.
Within the town.
Seven now or six? Okay.
Six, yeah.
So you guys failed and lost an extra one, you know, you, you, you know, we're not, we're not.
I mean, you know, as far as like the stickers, we can either, we can make a decision to extend the stickers for another month till we get to the end of July. Something as simple as that, when more PPEs available and, you know, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I would be more in favor of that, right?
I, I would even make a motion right now to cover that, so you don't have to address it any further. I'd, I'd make a motion that we extend the transfer station stickers for. An extra, you know, 30 days or 60 days, whatever people feels appropriate. Suggestions?
You're making the motion.
Oh, I'm gonna say 30 days, but Jeff's already voted no twice. I gotta get him on board with something, so.
So he wants a hat trick, right?
If I was Jeff, I'd just vote no just for fun.
How about 60 days?
90 days, 90, 90, just like the taxes would do.
Alright, I'll go with Scott, 60 days.
Well, I'll second that.
Okay, 60 days.
Discussion on that? You're now bumping into September.
Well, it was June 31st, now it's August 31st.
Correct, but. If there's a, a fall rebound, it's gonna come in September, right? So maybe we should try to get this done in August.
Well, it's gonna take 21 days for that to show up, so we're good.
Okay, alright, so any further discussion on, what was it, 90 days now?
60.
60 days. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Jeff Murray, good job, three.
Hat Trick Murray.
Three.
I just don't think 60 days is gonna get as much. I think we should do a little longer.
Hat Trick Murray.
Alright.
I think we're gonna be revisiting this, but it's your choice.
Like, like Jeff McGuire said. At some point, we have to, we have to just accept that. We gotta move on with some stuff and deal with it, right? So.
You can't change your vote, Paul.
I'm surprised Mr. Murray didn't vote just to open everything right up right now, come on. Alright, so let's move on to our next thing. We have 7E, it's the Andover Youth Summer Camp. Who wants to sit there and go with this one?
I'll take this one, I guess. I don't know if anybody's aware, but Amy Knox is trying to get the summer camp up and running in Andovers. In compliance with the governor's recommendation of June 29th. Her plan is to run it for two months. And I, she has some issues trying to get PPE. And she's dealing with the school at the moment, trying to get. Permission to use the gymnasium and the music room. What I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen is, would we be willing to help support that program? Using rec money and not using town funds, but using Rec, Recreation Commission money? And. Empowering, if, if, if needed, to, to try to locate PPE for us if, if it is needed for the camp?
Well, just a, just a question, why would we need rec commission money for the youth, the summer youth program?
Just in case we need to get, well, for, for. For games, toys, things like that to use outside that they used in the past, used last year.
Yeah, Rec Commission last year like bought pools and stuff, I think, for them, right? Is that right, Jeff?
Yes.
So.
I, I personally believe we need to support that program. Personally, I believe that program needs to be a total town program down the road. But for this year, it, it absolutely needs to be supported. I think it's a benefit for all of the parents with younger children to allow them for a place to go and. We absolutely need to make sure that they have access to the gymnasium for the summer. For the period that they're running this program for. I'm not sure that. The, it would probably be more like six weeks on the gymnasium, but I do believe they did finish all of the work that they were gonna do at the school already for the summer. So.
Yeah, I think the response that Amy got, she CC'd us, the responses she got from the school at this point is they're waiting for the guidelines from the governor that come out on Friday.
So. I have no problem supporting a, a motion to allow the. The, the summer camp program to move forward and to have access to the gymnasium.
Sponsored by the Rec Commission.
Sponsored by the Rec Commission.
Rec Commission, and I just had another request is, is if needed to use our town attorney. Because if she needs to draw up any kind of documents or anything to review prior to the camp.
Right, a waiver or something.
Waiver for COVID. I don't know what recommendations we're gonna get from the governor, so I just wanna make sure that we have those tools in place. And we're ready to go and hit the ground running once those regulations come out.
I, I would say as long as, I, I'm in favor of what you're talking about, as long as we include. That the appropriate P E, PPE is available for the duration.
And that's where we may need some, we may need to get some help from the Selectmen and the Town Administrator. To help locate.
I mean, I can't even get it for my employees.
I know, it's tough. And I'd hate to not be able to open because we can't get PPE.
I mean, honestly, the majority of PPE that the town employees have. I got from my father's girlfriend, who still is in quarantine in Shenzhen. And she can go down to the local drugstore and buy, you know, M95s in bulk. The only problem is most of them got stolen in shipping. So we only got a third of what I, you know, I got through her. But that's the majority of what we've gotten in this town right now, other than the fire department has got some, because they have some independent channels.
I mean, hopefully we got six weeks before camp theoretically starts, so, you know, hopefully things get a little better as far as supply chain.
Do you think it would be inappropriate, anyone, that we sort of put this out there on social media that we're looking for PPE to support? The cool program for the summer?
Donations, you're asking for donations?
Or, or anyone that can source them for us, you know?
What do you think, Jeff? Sitting there putting out social media that we need something. I mean, I'll sit there and try to do what I can and find some resources.
Okay.
I, I just wanna put it on for discussion today, just so we know what the challenges are going forward. And I think there's a lot of parents that need to get back to work and they're not, I mean, with Channel 3 Kids Camp closing. This year, it's gonna be very difficult for, you know, parents, working parents to return to work if they don't have any place to take their kids this summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even for the, you know, the people that are lucky enough to still work from home that their kid's in a change of environment. Not that I'm speaking from experience, but you know.
I didn't think we're working from home right now with all that interruptions again.
As somebody is interrupting now, yeah, okay. But yes, I, I think we need to support it for sure. And I think asking for donations, if, if parents are seeing that there's a need and that's gonna help their kid. In a program, I think they'll, they'll be willing to donate supplies if they have the means.
So let's, let's see what the recommendations come out with on Friday. Then we'll plan on either over the weekend or next week, putting something out there saying this is what we need to make this happen.
I mean, it may come down to the point that parents actually have to, you know, provide PP for their children. It's, that may, it may come down to that and hand sanitize it.
Well, let's see, let's see what we can do.
Yep, and we don't know what the requirements are gonna be yet.
No, so we'll wait till after Friday and then throw it out.
Okay.
Okay. So 7F, Recreation sign request by Joe King, who is a member of.
The motion didn't. Go through.
We didn't make a motion on that one.
Yeah, we didn't make a motion yet.
For the summer camp?
Yeah, if we have to, if we have to down the road in the next couple, in the coming weeks, we could probably get together and have a special meeting and do that.
Jeff doesn't want to have to vote yes on anything, so. No motions from Jeff.
Well, I don't know what we'd be voting. I just don't know what the require, I just wanna have the discussion to make sure that. We as a group would support it, and if we are and we have to run into a roadblock, that we're ready to act if need be from.
Amanda, Jeff is actually in favor of this, and he wanted to see if the rest of us would come around and support him in this issue. Which it appears that the rest of us have graciously sat there and said, we would support this. So it would be a, it would be a unanimous vote on this one.
Oh, we're not gonna take that because Jeff doesn't want to have to vote yes after he just voted no three times.
Push it off to the next meeting. Alright, so 7, 7F, Recreation sign request by Joe King, who's a member of the Recreation Commission. Before Joe gets, you know, we let Joe, let Joe speak, this sign has been out there for two years. It, it needs to go somewhere.
Listen, I, I don't even think we should be talking about this. Let's just let the Rec Commission decide where they want to put it.
No, 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 we have to, and, and it would go to Eric. Eric, where do you want that sign?
This is the Rec Commission sign.
It's the Rec Commission sign, but it's our land. Where do you want it?
It's where the town's land.
I understand.
We, they authorized the Rec Commission to buy the sign. Why wouldn't they decide where to put it?
Eric is not going to agree for them to put it anywhere they want.
Honestly, if it were me, I'd leave it stuffed in the back of Public Works and I'd never put it up. Because I don't really see the utility of that particular sign. Because there's not any one spot where we can put it up where we're gonna get the majority of town residents to really see it. And then if you think about good locations, you know, one, you could put it outside the community room. As a notice board, public notice board, that's reasonable. If, if you chose to do that, you could put it at the exit of the transfer station. Other than we would have to buy bigger letters and you're really only gonna get a couple sentences or two. But that's okay, that might be a valid spot for it. Or you could put it out front of the Town Hall somewhere where people could walk up and read it if you chose to do that. Those are.
You're saying it's not big enough to be a, a drive-by sign?
Well, I mean, it's four foot by four foot. So I mean, I was looking at the other drive-by signs and you could get a long sentence, one long sentence. So you could, if you wanted to do, for instance, Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday night, you could do something like that. But you're not giving detailed information certainly with it.
I, I thought, and I may be misconstrued on this, is Joe King on, is he on tonight?
Maybe he, maybe he can jump off and try and jump back on. I don't know if he's on a computer or, or a cellphone. But Joe, maybe try that. You're very, you're robotic. We can't really hear you. So I don't know if it's your internet connection or what.
I, I would tell you that the best, the best, I mean, in my mind, the one place that Eric didn't mention for the sign. Could be Long, the Veterans Memorial Field down at Long Hill, in the driveway area. Scott, would that type of sign work down there?
Yeah, it still has its limitations.
Yeah, I, that's, I mean. You drive by, how, how quickly can you read it?
Yeah, you're not, I mean, I think more about, about it for people that are going down there to use field or, you know, when we get to the point where we can have, you know, sports again and parents are going down there. It's a place where you can post, you know.
It would be perfect for that, Jeff. Again, I still, I still think this is a Rec Commission decision. I think we're, we're discussing something that's not really.
It is. It is a Rec Commission decision. The decision should be to come to us with, this is where they'd like to put it and we voted.
Well, well, did the recognition first? Want to put it up?
Can't hear you, Joe. Okay.
Jeff, do you know, do you know what the first, what did the Rec Commission first want to be done with that sign? You remember?
Yeah, they wanted to put it in front of the Town Hall.
And I thought that is what he wanted when he asked about this, getting dug out.
He tweeted, but, but if you, it was, it was vetoed by putting it in front of the Town Hall, either by the last Board of Selectmen or by the, the previous first select.
I mean, it could go by the, it could go. In the front, but it's, it's not gonna be, you can't really set it up so it's drive-by visible practically. So we have to be like a walk-up notice board.
Correct, that's why I was saying the parking lot at the field would be. A reasonable place for it. Because even at the Town Hall, the only place you can put it at the Town Hall, where do you walk up when you're entering the Town Hall? It'd have to be over near the community center, and I don't think. It would have to be in the flower bed.
Yeah, Joan would beat you up.
I know Joan, and she would have every right. That's the only place at the Town Hall that's like a walk-up area where people could see it as they're walking in the building.
So I have a question for Eric. Eric, does this, I know what, I know what the inside looked, but does it have like provisions to put up like pieces of paper, like eight and a half by 11? Sheets of paper, like posts, notices and things like that inside?
Not really, it's that kind where you put the individual letters and you stick them into the black backboard that's got like little slots for letters.
Okay. So the only other, the only other possible place I would consider that would be a good spot for that would be the pond at the bottom of School Road for the trails.
Well, how about we sit there, how about we do this? How about we put this off till our next meeting? We ask the Rec. Commission, like Adrian wants to come back and say exactly where they want it, and we go forward. Done.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. 7G, the discussion of the senior transportation vehicles.
Okay, so you should have all had some information that I sent around to you. Uh, so basically, there's an 80-20 state slash federal grant that will allow us to purchase a vehicle, potentially two vehicles for senior transportation. So my suggestion, and so we have to make a decision whether we're, the Board of Selectmen is in favor of it or not, and whether you're in favor of purchasing one vehicle or two. And I'll give you this to this, to you very quickly. Really, what we need right now is another minivan, because we have enough medical calls normally that we're often using like a 12-passenger bus, and sometimes a 20-passenger bus, to transport one senior to a medical appointment. So having the van gives us, having a second van makes that portion of transportation much more efficient for the medical calls. Um, so that's, that's our most obvious pressing need. And if we only had one vehicle that we could get, that would be it. It's going to cost us somewhere between $9,500 and $13,000 for our portion of it, depending on what we get. We get a couple different options, basically Toyota minivans or Dodge caravans. Um, my preference would be the Toyota, because I own the Dodge and it's kind of a piece of crap. Um, but that's just my personal opinion. Our existing one is the Dodge. It's a six-year-old one. So, uh, so that would be the option if we were interested in one. We probably, even if we requested two, we're only likely to get one. Um, but we can request two this year. If we were going to request two, we would replace our 20-passenger one with basically a 15-passenger unit to get us under the threshold where we absolutely had to have a CDL driver, which the 20-passenger vehicle requires. We could just use, use an F endorsement on your license, which is the same thing that like taxi cab drivers use for the 12-passenger one. So that's really my question. Um, is the Board of Selectmen in favor? Oh, and, and as far as funding goes, if it's just a single vehicle, because this purchase is likely to happen probably next June, because once they get all the requests from the town, they got to write a state grant to the federal government for the money. Then the federal government hums for, you know, four months, gives them the money. The state twiddles their thumbs and passes it down. So we're looking at, you know, roughly a little more than a year from now before we get the thing anyway. Um, if we get a single vehicle, it could be done, if there's excess money in next year's budget, it could be done by a transfer. Or the Board of Finance, it's a small enough amount, could approve taking it from unencumbered fund balance. If we go for two, that's probably over the threshold, and that would take a public meeting to actually get the funding.
Well, couldn't you do, couldn't you do them individually, though? Different vehicles, it's, you're buying two separate pieces of capital. So technically, it would be two meetings, or two, two requests. So you, you would, I don't think you'd hit the threshold.
I would have to have our town's attorney weigh in on that one before I, I said yes.
Our, our town attorney is going to sit there and say they're two separate requests.
No, well, he's right there, let him answer, Dennis.
Oh, I didn't see him, sorry.
Oh, I was sleeping, uh, what, what is the question?
Can we make separate requests?
It's exciting, I, I, you know, it was hard for me to, uh, resist doing something else, but, uh, I just, you kind of lost me after the Recreation Department signed.
We're, we're looking at the possibility of purchasing two vehicles through the state grant program.
I got that part of it, yeah.
One or two.
Yeah.
But they, I, my, my suggestion is that they are two separate vehicles, therefore two separate appropriations, so they wouldn't hit the threshold.
It all depends on, you know, what, what the, what the grant, uh, conditions are. You have to look, I'd have to look at the, whatever the state put, put out, you know, in terms of the, the details.
Well, we're having to do two separate applications, if I understood the paperwork correct.
Is that right?
It's only a single application. We can apply for one vehicle, or we can say, this is the one we really want. But if you give us enough money for two, this is the second one we want. So those are basically our two options.
Listen, I, I would say very pointedly, we've, as a board, have, you know, felt that we have not been able to spend money on the seniors at all. I, I think we know we need two vehicles. At any rate, we got to get rid of the 20-passenger bus, so let's just put in for two and call it a day.
Yeah, and the 20-passenger bus, by the time this passes, will be 20 years old.
Yeah, I would just make a motion that we put in for the two.
What agency of the state is putting out this, um...
Transportation.
Uh, Department of Transportation, Section 5310 grant. I can send you the particulars, Dennis.
We can work out the particulars, but, you know, you can probably apply for, you know, two vehicles, I mean, I, unless it's, you know, specifies one, I mean, I don't...
Look, let's, let's just get the motion through. Figure out the details later.
I can't help you much unless I can see the...
This is going to change too, the, the whole, you know, we need to apply now and hope we get both of them, because in another year...
It might not be there.
Cannot be there, and then we're stuck. So I agree with Adrian that we should apply for both of them, and we should sit there and, so... Adrian, you making the motion?
I'll make the motion.
So I have the motion 7G, option two, if you...
I'll make the motion. I motion to authorize the town administrator to apply for Section 5310 grant through the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the acquisition of a configuration H, five-passenger minivan, and a configuration D bus capable of transportation of 12 passengers to provide an on-demand transportation of senior and disabled residents through the senior transportation program. The second vehicle will replace a 2002 20-passenger bus that will be retired. The town will pay 20% of the cost for the vehicle, estimated to be between $22,200 and $28,000.
I'll second.
Um, further discussion, Eric, is that, is that for both the vehicles?
Yep.
That is for both the vehicles.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion?
Further discussion?
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Wow, Jeff Murray.
I know, I couldn't believe it!
I figured you would just vote no just for fun.
Yeah, just to keep it going.
That's a no-brainer, that is a no-brainer.
The seniors, Jeff Murray, the seniors vote.
Can I, can I make a motion that we have, while I move his camera down, I've been looking at his hairline for two hours?
Oh, boy.
It's going to be on public access, so, okay. Let's move on to our next item. We have 7H, an ordinance regarding, uh, elect replacement, resignation and replacement of an elected official.
I forwarded the revised version of this from Mr. O'Brien to everyone at the beginning of the meeting. So if you check your email, it should be there.
So if you give me a sec, I'll share the screen and pull that one up.
Thank you.
Uh, I have too many windows open. Hope like hell it's that one. Okay, so that should be the revision...
Look, scroll down.
Yep.
Yep. I think that's the right version.
Yeah, that's the one that Adrian wrote paragraph five, and I changed it a little bit, but, uh, you know, whatever. I sent, I sent, I sent it back to both of you.
Yeah, Eric, do you want to pull up his corrected version?
I think this is his corrected version, is it not?
No.
Don't think so.
No, it's, it's not, it's not much different, but...
Okay, any, number five is, any applicant to fill an interim vacancy on an elected town board or commission must submit in writing or by electronic means to the town clerk a letter of interest, and such application shall be made available for public inspection before any meeting to consider filling the vacancy is noticed and held by any such board or commission.
Yep, so that's not the correct one, Eric.
Okay.
That's the right one that you just read, Jeff.
Yes.
So... This is related to, uh, filling of some vacancies that, uh, you know, may not have, uh, may have been done in accordance with the rules, but not, may not be as transparent as, uh, we as Board of Selectmen would like to see in the future, so, um...
Basically, what we're looking for is a paper trail. When someone applies to a board, it's, it's collected by, when someone resigns, that the town clerk is notified correctly, and it's a public notification, um, and a timely notification. And when someone applies, that it's both timely, it's recorded, and most importantly, that the town is made aware of anyone applying to any board, so that, you know, if, uh, you know, Paula applies to a board, and I want to go in and say, hey, Paula's a great person, I'd really like to see her on that school board, or I'd like to see her on that inland wetlands board. I can do that, or I can say, hey, you know, Paula is really, doesn't know anything about wetlands, you know, she lives in the high ground, it's dry up there, I don't want her on that board. I can do that as well. So this is really just about transparency and giving the public a, a chance to have a say, just like they would if someone was, you know, in an election or, or what have you, so... It's, we have some guidelines in the town charter, it's just not clear enough. And that's why I, I was looking to do something with this.
So if I may, the town charter makes it, you know, sort of clear that when somebody applies for, uh, or when somebody resigns, that they have to submit a, a, something to the, uh, town clerk. Doesn't say that, it kind of implies it.
Yes.
But that's, uh, uh, you know, that's the problem, uh, you know, I'm a former town chair, I was town chair in Wyndham for many, many years, and there's all, all kinds of things that go on, and, uh, there, you know, there's a loophole here, somebody could get a, find out that somebody, a lot of times when people resign, they send the resignation to the, uh, town chair or to the chair of the board or commission, and not to the town clerk. And it's possible, if I'm a town chair and I, I want to do, I want to get somebody on there that I really want to get on, I could sit on, I could sit on it, and then, and, you know, and recruit somebody, and, uh... The other thing that comes into play is you have a, a rule in your charter that says that if the board or commission where the vacancy exists does not fill the vacancy within 60 days of its, uh, of the resignation, then, uh, the, the authority to, to fill the vacancy goes to the Board of Selectmen. And that's, that's what's something that might have happened in this, in a situation that Adrian brought to my attention. This is just an effort to try to tighten it up a little bit. And I, I, I did not, Adrian, um, apply this to, uh, appointed officials for a reason. Uh, my, my feeling is that when somebody runs for office, they're, you know, they're out there putting theirs, themselves on the line. And, 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 you know, and exposing them to this kind of process is, uh, you know, the same kind of process you all were exposed to when you ran for, uh, the Board of Selectmen. But when you're going for an appointed position, it's a little different. And, um, you know, there, there's something in the FOI that says that, uh, we, we've had this issue come up in a, in a different, in a much different way in, in Wyndham recently. And, uh, the FOI seems to say that, uh, and I think it's, it's geared more towards employees, but it says employees and officials. You know, there's supposed to be, uh, uh, some sort of, uh, confidentiality regarding people who apply for things, especially employees, because, you know, you may be holding down a job, and you, and you, you may be applying for another job, and you don't want your current employer to find out about it. But the way it's drafted and the way it's in the state statute is kind of, uh, unclear, but it does include officials, and your officials, and people who are on appointed positions are actually officials as well, in my view. But, you know, I, I just didn't want to include appointed officials, that's a little different point. If you're an elected official, you cannot be removed from office, for example, um, until you're, you know, you, you're, you're up for election again, you either don't run or you're defeated. But an appointed, uh, official can be removed, uh, in, in the interim if they don't do what they're supposed to do. There's all, all kinds of provisions, and I'm not sure what your charter says, I didn't look into it. On, on removing people who were appointed, I think there's a provision in there that people can be removed, but you cannot remove an elected official, that's different.
Dennis, as far as, as this resolution goes, just so we all understand, this is a minor ordinance, we can sit there and pass this, and, uh, it does not have to go to a town meeting.
That's a judgment call on your part, I mean, and my part as well, advising you. But I mean, obviously, it's your call in the final analysis, I can't, I can't make calls for you, I can just advise you. But, um, yeah, there's a provision in your charter that allows the Board of Selectmen to pass, uh, minor ordinances. In my, you know, it's not, it's not clear as to what a minor ordinance is, but I seized on some language in the minor ordinance definition that says, "to ensure the orderly day-to-day maintenance of the order of the town." And I think this is really kind of a minor, a minor thing. It's a very fine point, it's not something that's going to come up very often, but it was something that Adrian brought to my attention earlier. And then I found out today from, um, Eric, that, uh, he wanted to have an ordinance, um, drafted, and, uh, so I did it this afternoon. And this may be kind of rough, but it's not bad.
It's, it's not bad. So, uh, Eric, um, well, it looks like Mr. Mandeville is frozen on us, so there's a reason why he has not been talking? Oh, there he is.
Oh, he's not frozen, he's just, uh...
I was listening intently.
Good, I, I like that.
That was unbelievable.
After sitting, after being here for two hours, I kind of wanted to say something.
So...
If I'm wrong.
So listen, uh, as far, as far as I'm concerned, this does need to get passed. But Adrian, do you have a problem with Eric posting this on the website and getting any public input before our next meeting?
No, I think it would be appropriate for the public to weigh in if they have any concerns or, or language issues, but, um...
Do any of the other members of the Board of Selectmen have any changes that they see or feel need to be made to that draft? Scott?
Looks good.
All right.
I have a couple of changes myself that I see in the paragraph that I edited.
Okay.
Uh, paragraph five, that is, yes, that's, it's up on the screen now.
Yeah.
Uh, it says, "Commissions," there should not begin S on commissions. This is, this is, these are fine points, but I'm a, I, I consider myself a wordsmith, and it's very important to me.
We'll let you worry about the editing, and we'll get that done, and once you edit it...
Okay, okay.
...to Eric, Eric, you can post that up on the website so the community can, can, like, weigh in on it, and then next month, we can sit there and vote on this. Hopefully, Jeff Murray will vote with us on this.
Oh, come on, you guys are killing me here.
I am going to try very hard to get his approval.
Can you, well, can you, can you email it to Jeff first, so that he can okay it before it goes up?
Well, like I said, I just wrote this up this afternoon very quickly.
All right, well, if you need to make some changes, make the changes, get it, Eric, and, and we can all see them before they go up the website.
So I have carte blanche, at least for a while.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
So, uh, 7I is, uh, the Safety Committee. So, uh, we had, uh, previously, uh, one of the new residents, Joe, I forgot his last name, because I can't see him up on the screen. Um, he has, uh, brought some issues related to Lake Road, and, and just as we all know of it...
Eric, can you get rid of the sharing screen, please?
Yep.
The state, the state trooper has, um, well, up until the COVID-19 issue, had been, uh, doing a significant number of patrols specifically around the lake, as far as I'm concerned, since I live on the lake. So I had seen him out. I have no problem trying to put a safety committee together, um, to sit there and see what other items we could do to sit there and, uh, improve safety around the lake or in any other area of town. But...
Always turn Lake Road back into gravel, that usually slows traffic down.
Yeah.
I'll make it a one-way.
I would, I would sit there and tell you that, uh, Lake Road has had more pedestrian access in the last two months, or pedestrian usage in the last two months than it's seen in the last... pedestrian usage in the last two months than it's seen in the last 15 years. So, it's been awesome to sit there and see all the people walk in the lake and get around it. So, that's a great thing to see. But can we make it safer? Yeah. But, you know, I think if the Board of Selectmen wants to appoint a safety committee to try to sit there and look at options as to how to improve safety, I would be in favor.
Well, let's, Joe, you're still on?
Yep, that's correct, I'm still here.
Do you have any specific ideas or are you looking to try to get feedback from a bunch of people to see what they want to do? Like, do you have anything you've thought of or talked to other residents that they've brought up?
You know, it's a little bit more complex, right? Because you can say, hey, let's put a stop sign here. And then you have somebody else that says, well, people just run right through the stop signs. So, it's got to be a combination of different things, and that's why I suggested a committee to get together to suggest and really to price out and get an organized thought process going on what needs to be done. You know, what can be done together, do some research on what other towns have done, you know, along those lines. You know, there are some intersections where there might be an extra stop sign that would help in the interim. You know, I don't think that if there's some areas that are identified in the meantime, you know, that we should wait to do something. But, you know, an extra stop sign at a couple of different intersections, I know on Island that connects the lake, it's kind of blind. If you take a left off Island on the lake, you kind of have to hope and pray you're not going to get your front end taken off. It almost happened to me a couple of times. You know, and then identifying some other areas where an extra stop sign could be handy on the opposite side of the lake as well. But again, I think it needs to be a collaborative effort. That's why I suggested a committee be put together.
Okay. So, Adrian, do you have any more questions?
How many people do you think should be on this committee, Joe?
I don't know. I mean, we could say up to six to eight, I think is a reasonable number. But any more than that, I think it might get a little bit muddy trying to figure out a solution.
Now, are you talking specifically about the vicinity of the lake? Are you talking about townwide? What is your area of focus for that? Because there is an existing Almaral Poa Safety Committee.
Okay. Yeah, so from my perspective, obviously, I live here on Lake Road, and so that's been a majority of my observations. Now, when I reached out to that Facebook page, just a ping to see if anybody else had noticed this trend, you know, other people from different parts of Andover also voiced their frustration in their parts of town. So, I can't speak for them. However, on Lake Road specifically, you know, that's my area of concern, especially with the lake being here and there being higher pedestrian traffic on Lake Road.
Well, like, you know, he's talking about other areas of town. I know the residents on Boston Hill got together and petitioned the post office in Hebron because it's a state road to allow us to switch our mailboxes to the opposite side so that we weren't crossing the road to get our mail. But, you know, I know we have a speeding problem everywhere in town. The question becomes, would it make, you said that Alpo already has a committee. Do we know how often they meet or who's on it?
That's just, that is a property owner's group, and I have never... Eric, have you heard anything from that safety committee as far as report back to us?
Yeah, they really were, last year they were definitely advocating for one of the the recording stop signs that flashes the speed. They, a couple of years ago, were pushing very hard for, you know, for speed bumps throughout the Lake District. You know, and several of them had conversations with me. When I was still Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission, I had a bunch of conversations regarding sharrows and signage, you know, designating that as a bicycle and pedestrian-friendly area. I had also tried to get a couple of years ago them to do a road mural because the one thing that's been kind of proven long-term to anything you can do to make something appear more residential and appear more narrow tends to lead to reduced speed limits on a road. That's why you see in Europe in a lot of cases, even if the whole road is paved, they color the sides of the road so it feels like you're on a really narrow road even when you're not. So there's a lot of things that can be done in that district. I mean, enforcement's part of it, but enforcement only works if you're giving out lots of tickets on a regular basis. And every time we do that, we get everybody bitching that they're getting tickets. So, you know, in some of its education, you might remember a couple of years ago, we did a mailer to all the town residents explaining what sharrows were, talking about low-speed zones around the lake, things like that. But they have fairly limited effect. You know, there's some kind of radical solutions you could consider. But, when you try interesting things, you start to run afoul of the Uniform Code of MUTA, the Uniform Code of Traffic Authority, whatever they're in, you know, in... Yeah, shoot, Dennis, go.
Well, I mean, you have a local traffic authority. I think the First Selectmen is definitely a member. I don't know who else is a member of the Traffic Authority in Andover, but each town has a local traffic authority.
That would be...
You might want to just, right?
Right.
You might want to refer the matter to the Traffic Authority, and I understand, you know, creating a commission of six to eight people in a town the size of Andover is not easy. Although you may have a lot of interested people like Joe.
I think that Jeff just found out he's on the Traffic Authority.
Adrian, I knew I was on the Traffic Authority.
You're probably the chairman.
I don't know.
You haven't been doing, you've been lax in your duties?
I don't know if you guys know, it's not a pretty big deal.
Are you saying you've been lax in your duties?
I am the chief of police.
So you need to apologize to Mr. Goodwin for the speeding issue that you're not addressing.
I'll have to tell Mr. Goodwin, I'm on one side of the lake and people do speed. But, listen, even from what Eric said, we need to be creative. How are we going to be creative? The only way to do that is to sit there and have some type of committee, you know, five-person committee, but it has to be town-inclusive. It cannot just be the lake area. And, but, we need to sit there and come up with some ideas that might work.
You know, I agree with you, but sometimes when you do things on a big scale, you know, it makes it a little harder. I kind of feel like you have a resident who's here who's saying, you know, he's interested, and if we ask him if he could come up with four other people that'll volunteer for this thing, he's probably going to tell us yes. Would that be right, Joseph?
Well, I don't have anybody in mind right yet. I'm still getting to know all my neighbors, but I could milk her up some folks, yeah.
The answer was yes. You're going to find four people.
Yes, I could, absolutely.
Joe will absolutely be able to find five people from the lake area that are concerned enough about the traffic situation that they could get on a committee.
And, and look, the Lake District candidly does pay a lot of taxes in town. Although, the rest of us do too, but the Lake District specifically, given their Butax and all that fun stuff over there. If we do it on a small scale over the Lake District in the next year, year and a half, let's see what they could do and then we can expand it. You know, instead of trying to go in 10 directions at once, because if there is a cost factor involved in this, we're never going to be able to do it for the whole town anyways. Because the town will shoot it down. Let's start small, see if it works over there, and then we'll move it out from there, expand it if it works.
Okay, then make a motion.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we start a committee of five people. A traffic safety committee specifically within the Lake District.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on the committee?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I'm a member of the Coventry Group, Bolton, and Columbia. And every town has got a thread similar to the one that's in Andover. It's a problem in every town. I've read up about it, about speed. I know somebody just posted they wanted one way, but if you're on the end of that one way and the fire truck has to get to your house and they have to go all the way around and do that one-way street to get to you, it's going to be an issue. And just a couple of other things like speed bumps, it's an issue with fire trucks and emergency vehicles sometimes to try to get down these streets if there's speed bumps. Like, like there was said earlier, the stop signs hardly anybody stops for. And, you know, I researched this quite a bit, you know, after the discussion on Facebook. And the number one thing that actually stopped all of this was people put signs in their yard, like the slow down signs, and that actually proved to be the biggest deterrent for speeding of anything that they did.
Yeah, drive like your kids are here kind of thing, right?
Yeah, like your child, my children live here, slow down. And, you know, you put them up and it becomes like a reminder to people, like, okay, this is your lake, slow down type of campaign. And those seem to work the best out of anything, police enforcement, everything, because most of those most of those solutions are just temporary. But, you know, like they said, a lot of the people that are speeding are actually residents down there.
Last bench of you tomorrow.
Yeah, and, you know, and it's got to be like a community involvement to say, look, we're going to police ourselves. I mean, there's got to be some pushback on the residents down there to say, hey, look, let's all slow down. Let's just knock it off and slow down. Get the signs up, you know, and try to have an active, work-together community get the speeds down. As I said, the police and everything, it's a temporary measure. From everything I've read online, and the signs, overwhelmingly work better than anything else. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Jeff.
And, look, we know we have a speeding problem in town, you know, and just like, if you talk to the resident state trooper, you know, he was handing out tickets left and right, and he practically wasn't giving anybody a ticket that wasn't going at least 20 miles an hour over the speed limit. And if you think about that, in the Lake District, that translates to somebody doing 45. And the reason that's important is, you know, there's a very simple relationship between vehicular speed and chances of killing somebody if you hit them. And, you know, if you hit a pedestrian, you know, and you're doing less than 30 miles an hour, your chances of killing them are pretty small. They're down around 10%. You know, and at 45 miles an hour, they're roughly 90%. So you have a huge difference, you know, in impact potential with that difference in speed. That's why, like, if you go to Europe, you'll find in little boroughs, I mean, they drop the speed limit down so low, it seems crazy, yet you get out on the Autobahn in Germany, you know, and you can drive as fast as your little car will go, but as soon as you get into the village limits, you're throttled right down. And that approach does work, but only if you have community buy-in. And I hate to say it, but we really don't. I mean, I got hit right in front of my house six, seven years ago by somebody doing well over 100 miles an hour that hit me airborne because he went off the hill by my house drunk at 4:00 in the afternoon, sideswiped my vehicle, almost ran over my neighbor. You know, and the only reason the cops caught him was he tore his bumper off on my car going by and his bumper had his license on it. You know, it's a problem. And as a cyclist, it's, you know, it's really a problem because, you know, you're very vulnerable. Same with walking, same with little kids.
I've been riding, I'd be, Eric, to your comments, I've been riding a ton this spring, and it's every town. Every town is, everybody's speeding. I mean, Coventry has, what, a dozen police officers? And then people are speeding rampantly over there. And Long Hill and Hendy have their problems. I mean, but it's got to be, the lake, number one, you could solve that problem by making a community effort.
And I feel like the Lake District is small enough and the houses are close enough together, and there seems to be a push right now over there for this. Let's see what they can do, and then we'll figure out how to copy that for the rest of the town. You know, that's all.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor to form a five-member committee for the Lake District. And let's vote on it. All in favor? Paula, you up? Paula?
Paul, you awake?
She's frozen, too.
I'm, yeah, I'm good.
He's doing the Adrian.
Wow, wow.
All right. So Paula, did you vote yes?
I voted yes.
Okay, we missed that. Okay.
We thought you were pulling a Jeff.
So, let's move on to item eight on the agenda, approval of minutes from the Monday, April 13th, 2020 regular meeting. We have motion?
Yeah, I motion to approve the minutes from Monday, April 13th, 2020, regular Board of Selectmen meeting.
I'm in a second.
Seconded.
All right, further discussion on the minutes? None? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Nine is the Treasurer's Report. The Treasurer on with us, or is she gone? Okay.
She's still on.
Do you have anything you would like to add, Barbara, to the...
Um...
For...
I'm sorry, did you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. Just a couple of things on the Treasurer's Report. The TAR money came in. I don't know if Eric had mentioned that. Two payments totaling about $187,000. And that'll get posted. It wasn't posted as of last week when the reports went out. And the only other comment to make is about expenditures. Eric and I are still monitoring budgets. I'm scrutinizing them, watching them, and getting a sense of where the money might be toward the end of the year. I did have a conversation with the Registrar this morning, setting aside a little bit for supplies that may still need to be purchased out of this year's budget for the elections in August. Still working up some numbers on what can be turned back, transferred to another account department before the end of the year. And I'm going to be looking at a little more closely at senior transportation. So the discussion this evening was informational because Eric and I'll kind of regroup and think about what might need to be spent out of that budget still before June 30th, because otherwise that's a budget that will have quite a bit of money left in it. We'll be working up, we did a handful of over expenditures throughout the year, and that system worked very, very well. But now we'll be regrouping on that and doing the actual transfers, looking for money to shore up the accounts that are overspent. That's about it. Otherwise, it's kind of same old, same old. We did get the ECS money for April. Again, we got that right at the end of April last day. We'll be posting that. That was a million plus, so we're on target to get our state grants. All I can think of, unless there are any questions.
How do we do with collections for the April timeframe?
I haven't been able to analyze those yet. I'm still... I think the tax collector has finished putting, posting things, putting them in an Excel spreadsheet. I usually like to get the bank statement and compare her numbers with the bank before I post them to the system. From her conversation with her, I don't think it's noticeable for April. So the next few months will be more telling, especially June. So, definitely by next meeting, we'll have the April information.
I had a conversation with her a couple of days ago. She said April's receipts were basically typical. We have not seen any effect of people not, any increase in people not paying on time at this point. Again, that's very possible, that will change. You know, clearly, we have a lot of people in town that are unemployed, so I imagine a fraction of them will not be able to, to pay their bills on time.
It's just about 10% of our population currently.
Barbara, a question on educational spending. Have you and Eric been in communication with specifically AES about where they're, they're looking at being at the end of the year?
I have not had any information from school.
I mean, because right now you're $1.3 million under expended. I would like to know where that's going to fall.
I'll get more information, Jeff.
Thank you. Are there any other specific accounts that we should look at, or you want to point us to?
Yeah, is there, is there anything else that's tracking down?
No.
In terms of income streams, or in terms of expenses?
Expenses, where we may have some extra funds to shift to other things if we need to.
Yeah, there's a bunch of places we're going to be able to raid. I mean, the Board of Finance legal budget, we can take pretty much all of that. We will probably be able to take a little bit more out of the assessors' legal budget. We are going to be able to get a lot of money back from the registrar in the elections budget, because we frankly didn't really have any elections. So all of that got postponed, so that's going to be a big chunk. We look like we're going to be under in planning and zoning legal budget, so we'll be able to grab some money from that. So, yeah, we got a bunch of pools of money within the town that we're going to be able to reallocate towards priorities.
All right, so do you have a, do you have an ongoing priority list that we can match up to expenditures that we can encumber this year to make sure that doesn't roll back into the general fund?
Yes. I, I've started, we've started to put that together. You know, part of it is, I'm still trying to figure out that, one of the beauties of what I proposed for the Board of, Board of Finance, and if that gets approved, is by having permanent funds, at the end of the year, the unused funds can get transferred into the permanent funds, and then it's basically socked away for that purpose. So we have essentially an unlimited sink for excess money. So I would say, we're going to try to free up what we can for, you know, get the transfer, you know, transfer station project done. We're going to need some of the excess money for that. We, we still need to buy the, the thumb cards for when we eventually open up the library and the town hall and public works for the, the, not bookkeeping.
Time clock.
payroll.
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 Late at night. So, so there's a whole series of things I, I've got money slotted for. And if CIP meets again reasonably soon, I have one other thought that we might request, since we're not buying the mower this year. So, yes.
So what you're saying, Eric, as opposed to that terminology, there, there is potentially monies that can go to the priorities that this board has established.
Correct.
That we want to try to get done, because we know we did not fund them moving forward for next year's budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just so everybody understands that. I mean, it's not like we're, we're just trying to understand what is available, and then sit there and go through the priorities that the board has established, so that we can sit there and make some headway now, while we have the opportunity.
Right.
Okay. So Barbara, if you can make sure that you get with Eric, can give him as much information related to what the line items are that we can look at, that would be great. And to talk about, one, one last thing, Eric, in your, in your report, you talked about the things, the priorities you were going to do, one of the reports that you had given us, about chip sealing and doing some different programs. I'm assuming that with anything extra that we have, you're going to make that happen toward the end of this fiscal year. Is that accurate?
That is. In fact, I had a couple motions that I gave you all, that I would, if you want to just tell me to do it, I will just do it, and I will sign them. But if you want to countersign those motions, that would be fine. And the first would be one extra day of crack sealing by Indus in this year's budget. And the second thing would be to authorize the chip sealing program that I sent around to the board. But now I have kind of hard numbers, and we've reduced the total number of streets we're going to chip seal, just so we can fit it in to the money available. And this work would be done prior to July 1, if at all possible.
Before we go to try to make those motions, if we need to, is this the maximum that you can do, or is there an opportunity for us to do more than this?
Well, so, I mean, given the amount of money I have, this is a reasonable, so, so you're always playing off, you've got all these different things. You got to do a bunch of crack sealing, you probably ought to do some chip sealing. One of the problems we have is that in really, in the neighborhoods with a lot of traffic, like the Lake District, you're better off doing what's called a cape seal, rather than just a chip seal. So I'm allocating some money, basically reserving some money for the microslurry that gets put on after the chip seal. So basically, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to do a little bit of paving, although not much, you know, and we're, we're still discussing that right now, what we can actually slide in, but putting most of the money towards pavement preservation.
Okay, I understand that. But what I'm asking you is, if you and Barbara look at our current budget, and you determine there's unexpended dollars, can you do more than what you're laying out in the motion? Like, I don't want to make a motion and tie you to a number, if you have an opportunity to do more work, because that is the most important thing for the community, is to make our roads, well, not the most important thing, but it is one of the most important things for us, is to improve our infrastructure and our roads. So I don't want to make a motion, and it ties you to something, and you could do an extra $25,000 work that will improve another neighborhood.
Right. So what I would say to that is, if it looks like we're going to have excess money, because going forward, if the budget passes, we're going to have a series of permanent funds established, we simply transfer that money to the permanent fund, and then it doesn't matter whether I spend that before July 1 or after July 1, I can roll right in and spend that in the next budget year. So, yes, I have thought about that. And that's part of the reason why we're structuring things with permanent funds, so we can make that process easier.
Just keep in mind, though, you're dealing with two fiscal years. So if that fund isn't set up till July 1, that's a problem, because we want to move the money in June. So we need to move the money into some existing fund, or get a fund set up in June. But I think you, you can do highway. I think that's something, I will continue to work on fine-tuning what can come out, get firmer dollar amounts. And I'm definitely hoping by June meeting, couple of things pending, and then come up with the actual account numbers, and then we need a place to move that into in this fiscal year.
So let's, let's get that done, so we can.
Yeah.
Properly. And I, I agree with that. I don't necessarily, I mean, I'm going to speak for myself to the other board members, I don't think we need to make a motion to all those Eric, to do any of this work.
I don't think there's anything to do at this time, because we just don't know the dollar amounts right now.
Yeah, again, what, what I'm telling you is that I'm about to sign a contract with Comer for, for chip sealing, and I'm about to sign a contract with Indus for the crack sealing. If you guys are okay with just having me do that, that's fine. If you want to motion and authorize it, that's fine, too.
Eric, I mean, I, I think, you know, as Jeff said, we don't feel as a board we need to make a motion. You know what needs to be done, you know the amount of money that you have to do it. And if it's beyond that, you know, we'll figure it out.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Just as long as you promise to seal the track at the field, also.
The track at the field will be sealed.
Wow, that's Scott just laying it out there. Okay.
Does Jeff Murray need anything over in a woodland area, so he can vote yes on some things going forward?
I think he laid out one of his streets, didn't you?
He did.
Did.
Oh, that's why he's going to vote yes on this.
Barely drive. You notice, I, I know nothing's going to get done in front of my house.
Dr. No has a weak spot. Dr. No has a weak spot.
Here it is. I just want to know, when I signed that check for the mailbox, whose mailbox was it? Is really all I want to know.
You're getting the bill soon, trust me. It's no season's over.
All right, let's move on to the budget. Listen, we, we all have been on meetings for probably about 15 hours, or not, not necessarily that long, but there was a long drawn-out budget thing. Do we need to talk about anything about the budget?
No.
Okay, moving on, tax collectors report.
I think there was one transfer.
Yeah, one is basically, so there's one transfer there that is from the equipment maintenance line item in elections. And we're going to use that to replace two old computers that the registrar has. Now, we will probably get rebated 100% of the money we're putting into this, back from the state, because right now they have 100% match. But we have to buy the stuff and get rebated. So A, I'd like to transfer the money in, I'd like to buy the computers, because they definitely need it, and we're going to end up getting rebated the money eventually by the state. So that's that appropriation transfer that's there.
Okay, does anybody have a problem with that? Do we need to make a motion on that one? No? Okay.
Hmm, it's right at $2,000.
Or a...
Yeah.
Per charter, yes, the Board of Selectmen would make a motion on that.
Yeah.
To authorize that transfer.
Okay, does somebody want to make that motion, please? I'm trying to find it.
This is for the tax.
Okay, I'm going to sit there and make a motion. I'm going to make a motion for appropriation transfer, moving money from account 014, I don't know what number you put there, Eric, is that a 430?
0121-438.
Seriously? Come on, man.
That's why type everything.
Okay, I can't read that number, but budget account number for me. All right, Eric, here's what we're going to do. You make the motion, because you can read your writing, and it'll come from me.
Okay. The money is being transferred from budget account 0121-438 to 0129-735, which is from equipment maintenance elections to computer replacement slash services in the town office. And the appropriation amount that's being transferred is $2,000.
Okay, so that is the motion that I made for the Board of Selectmen. Is anyone on the second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion on this $2,000 transfer? None? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Mr. Murray, we're good, four to one?
Opposed. I just, it was a late, that was a late.
No, 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 I, I got you. I saw, I saw you point the finger. I got it.
No, 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 that was a, that was a yes.
Oh, you did a yes? Oh.
Yes. I was not opposed. I just called, I called you late.
Okay, so, so that's a five, five nothing. All right, so let's move on.
Okay, so the tax collector has three tax refunds, all three of them are for vehicles, as far as I can tell. So there's two possibilities for a motion. One, you can motion to approve and authorize me to sign for Jeff, who's supposed to sign for it. Or option number two, you can make Jeff come in and sign it himself.
I can come in and sign, but I got a question on the tax collectors report. So we're looking at March's information, so it's May 11. So we don't have a tax collectors report for the month of April? Barbara?
Good question.
I'm going to unmute. Yeah, because these are prepared last week. So she was finishing it up, and I haven't even seen the bank information yet. I mean, it is the 11th, but this was, I think, the 5th or 6th, we were trying to put these together. So the reconciliation isn't complete.
So you held up seeing the potential collections, because the reconciliation isn't complete?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. In the future, can you sit there and please just provide us what you have, so that we can sit there and see what's happening?
She can definitely provide it. I just don't have the bank information that early.
That's fine. It would be helpful if we could sit there and see it, so. Mr. Mandeville, do you have something to share with the rest of us? No? Okay. We're going to move on to the assessors' report. Eric, do you have something you want to talk to us about? Oh, no, you have to vote on, we have to vote on our tax collection, our refunds. Does someone want to make a motion on that one? And I will come in and sign. I don't have a problem.
So that's option number two for the motion. And Jeff, when you do come in, I've got a couple other things that you really need to sign, so that would be a good idea, anyway.
I motion to approve the tax refunds for April 2020, outlined in the packet.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, all those opposed, we're good. All right. Department reports. Actually, let's go back to the agenda. The assessors' report. Eric, is there anything that we need to discuss related to the assessors' office?
Not really. There's not a whole lot happening at the moment.
All right, department reports, fire department, resident state trooper, town clerk, building department, assessors' office, town garage, transfer station, library, senior transportation, registrars. Do we have anything specific to discuss in any of those departments?
Nothing that's critical.
Okay. One thing that I would sit there and address, Barbara, related to the state trooper, can we try to get the bill from the?
From the state before the end of summer?
It would be nice if we could sit there and see that, because we have a huge line item on our budget, and we have expenditures related to it. So if we could try to get that, that would be great. Item 14, resignations, anything related to resignations, Eric?
Not that you don't already have, not, not for this month, at least that I know of.
Any correspondence that we need to talk about?
Nope. The only thing I would say is, I just want to make a note that the presidential primary has been postponed to August 11.
All right. Anything else, any other members of the Board of Selectmen, before we move to public speak? We good, we good, we good? All right. Let's go to public speak. Okay, we can, you can go through these. Okay, we can, you can go through these, Amanda, I don't think it's necessarily for, if you're going, if you have nothing to speak, just please unmute yourself and let Amanda know. We can move forward.
I think Catherine's got her hand raised here, so should we start with Catherine?
Yes, I do, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, hi, I have a, an issue with re-upping the contract for the town attorney without anyone in town having any kind of say so, without having their concerns addressed.
Okay.
I've addressed it before, but I know that there are others that would like to address it as well.
Okay, when we have our meeting related to our reviews, we will sit there and take all that input into consideration.
Yeah, we would encourage anybody, anybody that's part of the public that has a concern to submit a letter of concern and we'll take that into account.
Seriously, you will?
Catherine, Catherine, you don't trust us?
No.
Okay.
Well, then we can't help you.
We'll take it into consideration, we may not all agree, but we will do our best to take it into account. All right, Catherine, anything else you'd like to bring forward?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe?
I've got nothing further. I'll be available if you guys, you know, require any more input, so.
Well, we expect you to be on the board, Joe, on that committee.
Absolutely, I can, I can do that.
All right, that's great.
Thank you, thank you for sticking with us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Elaine.
Okay, just as far as the senior transportation, the only thing that I see that we need desperately right now is just a small grocery shopping trip. Because those shopping trips that the seniors used to take depended upon that for transportation to be able to get to a grocery store. Right now, what we have to offer them is calling in and calling to me Sunday through Tuesday, and I take their list of grocery needs. And then we send it off to Ted's in Hebron, and then on Saturday, Cert goes ahead and delivers the groceries to them. And only people with credit cards can do that, except we do have one senior who is able to, we, we pay, the town credit card pays, and then she goes ahead and writes a check to pay for it back. But she has an EBT card, which she isn't able to use through Ted's program. And people who just have debit cards and not credit cards can't use Ted's program. So there's a desperate need to be able to just give them a ride to a grocery store. You know, maybe one or two people, maybe during the senior hours. Early in the morning, so that there's very limited exposure for people. I know we'd have to talk, we only have two senior drivers now, senior transportation drivers now. We'd have to talk to see if they'd be comfortable, you know, taking one or two people to a grocery store, but if there's, I mean, it's a very limited thing that we could offer, but it's something to keep them from having to just have Ted's and Cert delivery at this point.
Well, Elaine, we had had, at the beginning of this, we had had a lot of people reach out and say that if seniors needed something specific, they were willing to step up and volunteer. If, if, you know, have you coordinated at all with Roberta or Kathy Pelosi or anyone with Eric to let him know the list of people that need to be addressed?
This has all been through Eric and Roberta.
Okay, and?
They know, we know of, literally, there's only two people currently in Andover that were doing this Ted's order and Cert delivery. So if there's just some way, we could just bring them to the grocery store, then that wouldn't have to be done. Because I don't know how long Cert's going to do this, you know.
Eric, I mean, can we, can we just get, see if we can put it out there, if we can get one or two people to volunteer to take the two people for a trip?
Well, but at the point where you're going to have volunteers do it, you know, if you're, if you're adding the exposure anyway, you might as well do it in a controlled environment with an employee and just run senior transportation to do it. And I think, I, I do have a meeting on Friday with Cert, that's one of the things we're discussing, is how we transition back to what we're doing right now to something that's sustainable. Because Cert can't continue to do everything they're doing right now for months and months and months. So that, that is a topic that's going to be under discussion at the end of this week. And we're looking at putting a plan together, how to move in that direction. And I agree, there, it's not a ton of people, but there's at least a couple, there's at least a couple cases where we don't have any real alternative support right now, other than Cert. And we need to figure out how to accommodate that.
Elaine, just email me or reach out to me and I'll bring the two people to the store at this point, I mean.
Well, that, that's not the issue, the issue is exactly how Eric just put it. Just looking for an official way to get back to that service. You know, it's not bringing the seniors to lunches, it's, you know what I mean? It's just that grocery shopping trip that didn't seem like a big deal way back when is kind of a big deal.
No, we realize that, and Eric's trying to adjust that on Friday. So you're saying they can wait until this happens, or what are you asking for exactly?
Well, Cert is still doing it, we are still doing it for the next few weeks. But it's just a matter, since the discussion was tonight, senior transportation and, and getting back up and running. I just wanted to point out that, that it almost seems like a minor thing. But we should do it kind of as a town officially. Instead of just, you know, because, because volunteers have gone and picked up stuff for these people.
Are you, are you part of that meeting on Friday?
Elaine, wait, wait, so Elaine, what you're asking, just so we all understand, is if we're going to restart medical trips, you're asking us to restart a grocery trip?
At, at least arrange some kind of a weekly or, or every two week grocery trip. I say maybe weekly, so you can do like two people one week and two people the next week, so that it's a limited number of people in the, in the vehicle.
But Elaine, you're, you're part of the meeting on Friday, correct?
No, I, I wasn't told about the meeting on Friday.
Okay, is there, but there's someone from Cert there?
Yes, yes.
And they're aware of this concern?
Yes.
Okay, so?
They're aware of the concern that Cert can't do it forever.
Okay, so, I mean, Eric's aware and Eric will bring that to the meeting and, and, you know, well, Eric will move forward with this, you know, that's really what his role is here, is to sort of facilitate these things, so.
Right, right.
Let's give him a chance to do that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, to reiterate that, that, that is an important thing right now, is to grocery shopping.
Okay.
Okay.
Eric, it's on the list for transportation options.
Yep.
Yep. All right.
Hi, everyone, so very briefly, I just wanted to share, since we're talking about food, our farmers market committee has been having meetings and we're planning for our season coming up, starting July 1. So I'd like to put it on the agenda for next month, but I just wanted to share that Elaine and our committee is working on a safe plan on how to host the market. We have guidelines and regulations from the state that we're going to follow. And farmers markets are seen as essential and actually very important right now. So we're excited for the season, regardless of the situation, so I just wanted to share that.
Have you reached out with the farmers market to any of the dairy? Because dairy seems to be things that people are concerned about right now, you know?
Um, I've been in touch with Mountain Dairy, I know that they're delivering, I'm not sure that they'd be able to be a part of our market, but if there's any other dairy farm that anyone hears of, any recommendations would be great. We do, I know people are concerned about meat, we do have a meat farmer. They're actually opening up their store on 66 in Columbia this weekend, so very exciting.
That's great.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to participate in public speak? So have you unmuted everybody, Amanda, that they could unmute themselves if they wanted to talk?
Yes, anyone can unmute themselves, if you'd like, I can still go through.
No, listen, we can, we can hold off on that. If they can unmute themselves and they would like to speak, anyone who would like to participate, one at a time, well, if we see your little mute button go off and you want to talk, well, we'll call you out. Okay, if it appears that no one else wants to sit there and participate in public speak, I think we're over that part of the agenda, so we are now on to, I believe, the last item, which is German. Is that accurate? Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second Paul's motion.
All right, further discussion on that motion, no. All those in favor? Aye.
I thought Jeff was going to get one more in, I'm so disappointed.
Disappointed that you, you chose to vote in favor of that, I think you should have voted no. But if not, that's great, everyone be safe, Eric, I will be in to meet with you at some point in time to sign those things. So you let me know what day it looks to you.
Okay, perfect, whatever works for you.